Is seven thirty two P M on Tuesday, March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Klein, and I am the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm calling this meeting of the board to order. I'd like to confirm all members and anticipated officials are present. So members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Venkatesh Holly.
Here.
Here. Daniel Riccadelli.
Here.
Elaine Hoffman.
Here.
And Adam LeBlanc.
Yeah.
Good evening to all of you here on behalf of the town, Colleen Ralston, our zoning assistant.
I'm here.
Good to have you with us. Is there someone appearing on behalf of one eighty nine Forest Street?
Yes, hi, how are you? My name is Ilya Zinagotzki. I'm one of the owners of one eighty nine Forest Street.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight. And on behalf of two twelve Pleasant Street. Is they can't have with us tonight? She is.
Yes.
Yeah, we're here.
Great, thank you. Someone here on behalf of sixteen eighteen Plymouth Street. Mr. Pichudo here.
Yes, we're here.
Okay, great, thank you. And on behalf of one oh six Mountain Vernon Street was Sean Snyder.
Yes, we're here.
Okay, thank you. And on behalf of one twenty one Park Avenue. Lena Krishchakar.
Yeah, this is Bala, her husband. I'm here.
Oh, hi. Great, thank you so much. So this open meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations signed into the law on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty two. This act includes an extension until March thirty first, two thousand twenty three of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March twelve, two thousand twenty executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which suspended the requirement to hold all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Public bodies may continue holding meetings remotely without a form of the public body physically present at a meeting location, so long as they provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. Public bodies may meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public comment period during each public hearing. For this meeting, the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom application with online and telephone access as listed on the agenda posted to the town's website identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Please be aware that attendees are participating by a variety of means. Some attendees are participating by video conference, others are participating by computer audio or by telephone. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, your screen name, or another identifier. Please take care to not share personal information. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask you to please maintain decorum during the meeting, including displaying an appropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. And as Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington, Massachusetts discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotony, an Algonquin word meaning swift waters. The board hereby acknowledges that the Town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. So I would like to start tonight's meeting. So very briefly, we, I am pleased to announce that the Select Board voted on March sixth to approve and a well-credentialed member of our town to fill the open associate position on the board. I would like to introduce him to the board and ask him to briefly introduce himself. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Adam LeBlanc. Adam.
Good evening. Yeah, so my name is Adam LeBlanc. I'm a resident over in East Arlington. I am a registered architect in the state of Massachusetts for about four years now. I work at a firm downtown that we focus on affordable and ugly housing in the state of Massachusetts. Grew up on the North Shore, been around this this area for my whole life, so very vested interest in in this town and and looking forward to contributing to it.
Wonderful. Well, on behalf of the board, welcome you to the board and truly appreciate your volunteer service to the town. So before opening tonight's hearings, here are some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicants to introduce themselves and themselves and to make their presentation to the board. I will then request that the members of the board ask what questions they have on the proposal. And after the board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. And at the conclusion of public comment, the board will deliberate and vote on the matter. So with that, the first item on our agenda this evening is docket number three seven three one one eighty nine Forest Street. This is a continuance of a prior hearing and the applicant has filed a letter requesting to withdraw. So with that, I would introduce Ilya to explain what their intention is.
Yes, good evening. How is everybody doing today? We are requesting to draw the doubt prejudice, our application. We are have made a decision to pursue renovation by right. So that's why we're seeking to draw our application.
Thank you. So the so just to be clear, so the intention is that you're going to be moving forward with renovations, but none of the renovations would require a special permit from the Board of Appeals.
That is correct.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board in this regard? The none. I move to accept the request for withdrawal permit application for one eighty nine Forest Street without prejudice. In a second?
Second.
Yeah. Any questions from the board on what the vote is? Seeing none, we'll call vote of the board. Mr. Dupont?
Aye.
And
Aye.
Dr. Holly?
Aye.
Dr. Riccadelli?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so motion to withdraw on behalf of one eighty nine Forest Street is accepted. Thank you very much for appearing this evening. Good luck with the renovations.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to pass the baton over to Patrick Hanlon for the next item on our agenda, which is docket three seven three three two one two Pleasant Street. Pat, you're up.
Thank you. I guess I can't say thank you, Mr. Chairman, because for the next few minutes I am Mr. Chairman. The next case is from two twelve Pleasant Street. We've received a letter from the applicant announcing her intention to withdraw. And the applicant is present. I'd like to call in her to reaffirm her intentions and say whatever she has to say about it before we do what we just did. Valley, are you here?
I'm here. Thank you. So we are respectfully requesting that our application for a special permit for two twelve Pleasant Street be withdrawn.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the request to withdraw the application without prejudice.
So moved.
Mr. Dupont, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, I think, Mr. Riccadelli. Do the roll. Mr. Dupont?
Aye.
Miss, Mr. Klein? I'm sorry, Mr. Klein is recruited on this case, which is why I'm doing it. Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Holy?
Aye.
Miss? And Mr. Riccadelli, have I?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion is withdrawn. Before I turn this back to Mr. Klein, I should point out that Mr. Holy has reviewed the have reviewed the the video of the proceeding and has filed the suitable affidavit under the Mullen rule to enable him to vote on this application. So thank you, Mr. Holy. And the Chair, the temporary expedient Chair, will turn it back over to the real Chair, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a quick request?
Yeah.
Because of the two the two votes we just made of withdrawal, I just thought, since there's been a good amount of neighborhood feedback, you could just quickly explain how those applicants may move forward, you know, without our board's approval.
Oh, certainly. So in both those cases, the applicants had applied for a special permit, which in both cases was for a large addition, so it's an addition that's larger than seven hundred fifty square feet outside the footprint of the house. And the, in both cases, there was opposition from the neighborhood in regards to those applications. And after further consideration, the applicants have decided not to pursue a special permit. That does not mean that nothing will happen on those properties, but it does mean that they no longer would require us as a special permit for a large addition. So if they, you know, application was for an addition that was seven hundred forty square feet, that would not require a special permit from this board. And there are other things that would require a special permit, but in this case, my understanding from both the applicants is that they do intend to do renovations to those buildings, but just to an extent that they would not require a special permit from this board, and they would be fully compliant with the requirements of the zoning bylaw. But thank you, Mr. Rickdally. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon?
Could I just add to that, that especially, and I have no idea what the intentions of either of these applicants are, so this is general and not related to their case, but people should understand that one of the options that one can have, rather than doing a large addition, is to tear a structure down and to rebuild it. And for that, you don't need a special permit. So that it's not just a matter that they could do something, but it's less than what they've already proposed. It's possible that that if other, depending upon the zoning ordinance and various other things, it's possible that they could do more. So this is, all this is, is they don't have the special permit to do what they asked to do, but it's impossible to predict really whether, what what will ultimately happen down the line, either because of what these applicants or because of anybody who owns the property in the future and seeks to develop it in some other way.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hanlon. And just in in further than that as well, any application to the town is a public record and is kept on file at inspectional services and can be requested through the open records law or by visiting inspectional services down on Maple Street. So with that, we have, next item is item number four on our agenda, which is docket three seven three six sixteen eighteen Plymouth Street. So if the applicant could please introduce themselves, and I will bring up the record submitted to the board.
So I, my name is Anthony Pichudo. I am the applicant on sixteen eighteen Forest Street, I mean Plymouth Street. We are looking to add a second driveway on our property. Our property is centered on the lot we, and we have sufficient amounts of space to the left and right to create two separate driveways and free up open space in the backyard.
This is the application that was submitted to the town. Ahead. Oops. Can't zoom in on this. Here we go. So the image on the left is the current condition and the image on the right is the proposed condition.
Exactly.
And so the intent is to demolish the existing garage, is that correct?
Yes.
And this portion of the drive, the portion of the driveway beyond what's indicated here, so this would remain, this would be added. And then everything back here would be removed.
So we're freeing up basically the whole backyard space in order to create a full backyard and create an open space in the backyard without having parking back there.
Okay. Um. I had a couple of questions on visiting the site. So this here on the plan is a fire hydrant, which appears to be in the way, the driveway. What is the intention with that?
So I met with DPW and the intention was to actually relocate it. So wherever the piping is running, we'd relocate it to be about probably five feet to the right or five feet to the left, mattering on where the piping is running.
Okay. And also, so this, the the right side property line, I believe the adjacent property is significantly lower. So there's a wall here.
We do have a retaining wall at the moment.
Okay, and has it? Is it certified that it could take the loading of vehicles parked in that area?
So my architect has proposed for us to to actually drop the driveway down on that right side to be level with the the adjacent lot. That way, we do not have to have the retaining wall, and it can really take on the load of what we're trying to accomplish.
And the are there any trees on that side of the property that would be removed as a part of that?
There's a, there is a few dead trees that would have to be but nothing living at the moment for trees.
And it has that been, has that information been discussed with the tree ward? To the best of your knowledge?
It has not.
Okay.
And whatever we, what we have discussed is whenever we need to propose to replace anything, even the dead trees that we would be removing, we have no problem replacing things in the rear of the lot.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dupont?
So I can't really see the dimensions all that well, but on the proposed driveway side to the right, what is the width, what is the width between the building and the lot line at that narrowest point?
That narrowest point is nine foot nine inches.
And I've driven by a couple of times, and I have to say, you know, to my eye, which is not necessarily accurate, it looks pretty narrow. And is there also going to be, there's supposed to be a buffer zone between the pavement, the paved surface, and the adjoining property? Is that calculated in what you're showing us?
It is.
And could you explain what those dimensions are? Because you have to have a certain pavement width, do you not, for the driveway? And then you have to have a buffer zone. So what are the dimensions on those?
So we actually propose two feet of buffer zone from the right of the driveway.
And and I'm not entirely clear that that's sufficient. It may be three feet. I'm I'm not sure. I don't know if you've confirmed that with the building department.
I have, and I I've done a few, I've actually done a few projects where the building department has given us the clearance for two feet, two feet off the right side. Or less, mattering on with.
Okay, fair enough. And and I noticed too, and I can't comment on whether or not the trees are living, but there are some fairly substantial trees toward the back of the parking area that you're showing. I don't know if they're in it or they're behind it. But just in driving by, I noticed that they're there. I don't know whether they're entirely on the property that you have or whether they're on the property next door. But that's something obviously that needs to be determined.
Yep. So as of right now, my architect has proposed the drawings to the driveways to be extended a little bit further than what we actually need for Arlington code. So it's we can shorten the driveway to be fifty two feet from where the front of our lot sits. That way, everything's up to code regarding the driveway and having sufficient amount of parking for each unit. With that being said, I think we have proposed about sixty feet deep on the drawings currently to give them that extra space, but we can reduce eight feet off of that proposed drawing.
Right, and and I think that the calculations that we've used in the past are, you know, dimensions from the I think we've seen it's got to be eighteen feet in length for the two parking spaces, if I'm correct. So I don't know from what you're describing, whether or not you conform with that.
Yes.
Okay, those are the questions I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Other questions from the board?
Nope.
Not see any further questions from the board?
No question.
So I will now open this meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand. It should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing our decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the participants tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the meeting host. You'll be asked to give your name and address, and you'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair, and please remember to speak clearly. Anyone wishing to address the board a second time during any particular hearing, the chair will allow those wishing to speak for a first time to speak first. Once all public questions and comments have been addressed, or we have reached the time of the eight fifteen, public comment period will be closed. Board staff will do our best to show documents being discussed. So if you would like to speak to this, please raise your hand. Several people with their hands raised. So the first name is Benjamin Moynihan. If you could give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone and members of the board. My name is Benjamin Moynihan. I live at seven Plymouth Street in Arlington, have been a resident of seven Plymouth Street since two thousand twenty twelve, and greatly appreciate this opportunity to participate in this discussion about the proposed special permit for sixteen eighteen Plymouth Street. Before I raise my my questions and comments for the for the board members, I would like to say that as a neighbor on on Plymouth Street, which is a wonderful little neighborhood in Arlington, many of us were really thrilled by the renovation of this property. It had been, let's say, undertended for many years. And so the fact that folks wanted to spruce it up is is a boon, I think, for for all of us. That that said, I I do have a couple of concerns about this permit, and I have one point of information, point of fact that I wanted to clarify. I believe in the original or earlier permit request, when the folks that are renovating the property asked to build the extension on the back of the house, that the proposal to remove the garage was already part of that plan. So that's not a new thing, I don't think. That's a, that's a question to the board. Do you guys know whether that's new or whether that was part of a previous plan? And I have a few other comments.
I I do not know the sequence on that.
Okay. So the second thing is my my own sense, and I'm not expert in this, but there are large trees on either side of where the fire hydrant is located at the edge of the road. And my concern is that if you move the fire hydrant five feet to the left or five feet to the right, one would impinge on the root systems of those older trees. And, you know, Arlington has made a commitment to net zero by two thousand fifty, I believe, and we don't want to lose any trees to sort of further hinder our pathway to a net zero. On a related note, I'm not aware that any of the trees between the two properties are in fact dead. I'm not a tree expert. I do see them have leaves in the warmer months of the year. That doesn't mean that I know that they don't have dead limbs, but I don't believe that they are dead in the sense of no leaves at all and stuff is falling down any more than a natural tree would, you know, occasionally need trimming. And there are several trees between the two properties. I think there's about four or five major trees back there that provide significant shade in that that area. And of course, the trees on the road do as well, so we would not want to lose any of them if if at all possible. The other thing is that I'm not aware on Plymouth Street, at least, there are no other properties that have two driveways on either side of the properties. So in terms of the character of the property, and this is still appreciating the green space that's being created by removing the garage in the back, whether or not this special permit is granted, that is greatly appreciated. But the two driveways, you know, as as the person, the folks noted in their application, they are trying to make accommodation for the, they recognize that they will be creating more runoff by putting pavement there. So anyway, that's that's a concern. And I think that's all. I'll I'll stop right there, and I see several of my neighbors on the line as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Then I'll move next on the docket here is Howard Ridinsky.
Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak and express my opinion. I'm Howard Ridzinski. I live at eleven and thirteen Plymouth Street, so I'm diagonal across, one house over. I've been a resident in this property since nineteen ninety nine. And to echo what Ben said, we have a terrific street with terrific neighbors. And we are certainly grateful for the new owner and developer of this property and restoring and renewing it. That being said, I I do have a couple of questions. I I just want to understand, I I also agree, I don't think those two trees that are in the driveway space are dead. They are large and they are older trees. And am I mistaken that the developer owner, you mentioned that you want to lower that side of the driveway so it is at the same level as Andy and Betsy's property immediately adjacent? So that would make a driveway on the right-hand side that would be significantly lower than the left-hand side? So that would make a a driveway on the right-hand side that would be significantly lower than the left-hand side. Did I not hear that?
That was what he had indicated. Yeah.
Well, w- well, it just just think about that for a second. That doesn't pass the eyeball test. So you have o- o- one driveway on the left side that is higher than the other. Um, aside from the fact that none of us, and I own a two-family eleven thirteen across, none of us have two driveways. And so would I like to have a driveway on the other side of my house for my tenants? Sure, I would. Um, but I think it would change the character of the street, of the houses, and of the neighbors. But beyond that, the eyeball test of, if you look at it, I I can't see how there would be two feet of space on the side of the house. It just doesn't pass the eyeball test. It the driveway that you would have, depending upon how far that retaining wall goes over and is the property of sixteen eighteen versus a shared retaining wall with the adjacent property. There's no way that there is enough room to have two cars there um and and a separate driveway. It just doesn't look right. There there is nothing about that that passes even an eyeball test, let alone a, you know, a formal zoning rules test. Um, a- a- and I I personally object to it strenuously. I don't think it's it's a good idea. There's plenty of yard space in the back. Other neighbors have turnarounds. Uh, uh, we certainly appreciate the the desire of the developer to have yard space, and that would make the property more marketable and two driveways as well, i- and potentially increasing their own um, you know, revenue from the sale and development of the property. But I don't think that that is the neighborhood's concern so much as keeping the character of the neighborhood and not trying to shoehorn a driveway into that side. It 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 just doesn't pass the eyeball test, and and I would agree with Ben on the fire hydrant as well. You know, possibly i- interrupting or intruding or ruining, you know, the 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 root systems of two older growth trees and the two trees that are adjacent to Andy and Betsy's property in the driveway presently. Uh, I've been living here twenty years. They seem to blossom every year. There seem to be leaves on them every year. So again, I I I don't think this is a well-advised idea uh to put a driveway on that second side, and and I firmly object to it and object to this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, next up is Steve Moore.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um, I uh appreciate the comments of uh both Mr. Monahan and Mr. Radinsky. Um, Radzinski, I'm sorry. Um, and uh about the trees in particular, which of course is always my uh permanent concern. Uh, moving the fire hydrant anywhere near the large trees would, of course, uh disrupt uh the health of those trees because to put in a fire hydrant means you've been down deep and sever probably some main roots with the trees. So I'm not sure um, that that's a not only not, my guessing it's not a good idea, it's uh not according to the town's bylaw, that that the uh development cannot damage trees that are public-owned uh property, street trees uh as part of the process of development. Um, although I I I'm a little surprised to hear that the DPW was uh was aligned with that approach because I think they they kind of know this already, the tree warden, this employee of the DPW. Uh, also with the trees uh that have been mentioned by the previous speakers, they are within the setbacks. They would require a tree warden to sign off. There has to be a tree plan created um for uh their protection during construction, and if they are to be taken, there would be a significant related fee for that because they are protected trees as long as they're six inches or greater in uh diameter at breast height. Uh, as to whether they're alive or not, that's something the uh tree warden would have to determine for for the applicant. Um, the trees often are dead, but as one of the previous speakers said, sometimes it's just a question of uh poor trimming and maintenance, and um that probably is something which can be easily remediated then. The trees, as I said, are protected and available. So, um, and just as a um, not related trees, the idea of putting driveways on both sides of the house in the neighborhood where uh two-family houses are serviced by long driveways on one side and spaces in back. Um, the look of a house with cars parked on both sides of it is quite a bit different. Look of a house of cars parked either behind it or on one side of it. And uh, I am sympathetic to what I'm hearing from the uh neighbor saying it really is not what the characters, it's going to make quite a bunch of pavement in the the side yards of the houses. So, thank you, Mr. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, next up is Ellen Kushner. Ms. Kushner, you're on mute.
I have to unmute myself. Um, hi, I'm Ellen Kushner. I live at thirty Highland Ave. I've lived there since nineteen ninety-six. I'm also a residential architectural designer. Um, so I wanted to just weigh in on this proposal. I I echo what my neighbors have already said about the fact that we're that I'm pleased to see that this house is being renovated and that some, you know, new um construction is injecting some much-needed care into this this building. That said, um Plymouth Street is a very short street with only a dozen houses that is um not heavily trafficked, and it's always been a street where kids have played in the street. And adding another driveway where people are going to be pulling out and potentially um, you know, causing more disruption and more danger to the children, I think is something that we really have to consider. Um, I also echo the fact that uh there is no precedent on this street for two driveways on either side of a house. Every single house on this street has similar problems. There are only um two single-family houses on this block. So every other house is a two-family house, and they all have to grapple with juggling cars in the driveway. It's just a fact of life. Um, I want to speak about twenty-two Plymouth Street because um that is the adjacent property. I know the owners also want to speak. Um, but that property slopes back uh slopes quite precipitously from the sidewalk, heading back toward the back of the property. So even if the new owner is proposed to lower the driveway, and I do agree that it's going to look very strange to have driveways on either side of the street, one of which is significantly lower than the other, um, hardscaping that area will definitely create a drainage problem in the sloping drive uh yard of the house at twenty-two Plymouth Street. So I don't think that this is um a well-advised proposal, and I too would like to object. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Betsy Block.
Hi, uh, I'm Andrew Pacros, Betsy's husband. Uh, we have lived here for twenty-six years.
Twenty-two Plymouth.
At twenty-two Plymouth Street.
Next-door property.
Yes, and I'm a uh real estate appraiser for the past thirty-five years in the area. And a couple of major points we would like to make are we think it's a very unfortunate idea. Oh, can you hear me? Okay. Um, there would be a significant um reduction of our privacy thus this driveway running literally on the lot line of the property. There is no possible way to put an adequate buffer zone between this proposed driveway and our property. Is as noted on that original plot plan, the nine-point-nine feet is just inadequate, and that nine-point-nine feet does not consider those two large trees that are directly in that bay area. Those trees are a hundred percent alive. We've lived here. We've had to deal with those trees. There is no way that those are uh dead trees at all. So I think there would be a significant reduction in our privacy and the appeal of our property and the marketability, should we ever want to sell that property? Because the driveway would be literally looming right over our whole patio area, and um it's just uh, it just wouldn't be aesthetically pleasing or particularly functional. Um.
I would also like to talk about the stone wall for a minute.
Yeah.
So for the first ten, we've lived here for twenty-six years. For the first ten years we lived here, the former owners had told us that we owned that stone wall plus six inches over into what is obviously not our property, but we were told it was, so that we would have to pay for the removal of an actual dead tree, which we did. Then at that ten-year mark, we got um it the land surveyed, and that told us that we owned half of the stone wall. So the fact that we're being told right now that we own none of the stone wall is, first of all, news to us, shocking news after twenty-six years. And second of all, that's a historic stone wall from when this land used to be farmland. And we would be heartbroken to lose that stone wall. We feel very attached to it and feel it is a piece of history. When you started the meeting, sir, you talked about the history of this land, and we very much feel that on our small but mighty property.
Um, and just a couple of other things. I would just note that i- there is no hardship to sixteen eighteen that they need this second driveway. As everyone's already pointed out, no one has a second driveway. They already have an existing two-car garage. They could more than adequately park four cars on that side of the property. There's just no, there's no need for it, and there's no precedent for it. Um, and as people have already pointed out, an extra driveway, children on the street, extra hazards, and the notion of moving the fire hydrant is also uh suspicious or whatever you want to say to us. Um, moving it towards our property, again, there's a very large tree there, and we already have a fire hydrant on the other side of our property. So adding a second one directly in front of our property, again, I don't think is um
Makes sense for that street.
Yeah, it's not, and it's just not a well-thought-out plan. So um, but primarily, I'm concerned about our privacy, the utility of our property, and
Drainage.
As well as the drainage notion um that I just don't think uh the space is simply inadequate uh in size to accommodate all of these notions, and there's, again, in no possible way to put an adequate buffer zone of any kind of vegetation, because the stone wall is the, is that space, and those two very large trees. Um, I would be shocked if the tree warden would allow those to be touched any in any way. They're 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 quite large and quite healthy. So.
The last thing I would like to add is um, we built a patio. We completely landscaped our yard after having lived here for um, more than twenty years. We finally landscaped our yard and put in a beautiful patio, and this would completely encroach on that space that we waited for two decades to, you know, install, pave, saved up, paid for, install, and we enjoy it tremendously, and that would definitely be ruined, to be honest. So.
We 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 object to the the notion of
Strongly.
A second driveway.
Can you tell me what the height of that wall is approximately?
The height of the wall from our side of the property?
From your side?
No, no. I would say like three feet.
At what?
But it depends on which part of our lot, because it it's less at the tu- near the street, and then it is probably for toward the back of our property, toward our neighbor's house.
Okay.
Between two and four feet, you know, from front to back.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Are there other members of the public who wish to address this hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on this hearing. Um, and come back to the board. So um, but we have in front of us uh this is a request for a second driveway. Um, a second driveway is allowed under Arlington zoning by law, so long as there are certain findings that are made by the uh by the zoning board of appeals in regard to that request. Um, so there's the standard findings that the board needs to make uh for any special permit. Uh, so is the requested use allowed? Is the requested use essential or desirable to public convenience and welfare? Uh, why the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety? Why the requested use will not overload any public system? Why the requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the neighborhood? Why the requested use will not be detrimental to the public health or welfare? And why the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood? And then um specific to the location of parking spaces, the board would need to find that the second driveway may be added in a manner that avoids an undue concentration of population, that the second driveway may be added in a manner that allows adequate provision of transportation, and that the second driveway may be added in a manner that conserves the value of land and buildings in the vicinity. Those are the questions that are before the board. Um, the board did receive uh late today um a memorandum from this um from the Department of Planning and Community Development. I apologize, that came in uh at five-thirty this afternoon. Um, I have not had a chance to look at it as of yet. It'll open. And let's see if I can share this. Hopefully um you are seeing a letter from the town of Arlington. The they have been seeking a second driveway. Property is currently being remodeled. The property is in R two district, conforming the bylaw lot size frontage uh other requirements. The proposal would convert the rear yard to approximately twenty-two thirty-four square feet of green open space. It's usable. So it's in the property lot coverage would decrease twenty-six point not eight to twenty-two under proposal. Would not increase existing now conformities on the structure. Um, is a permitted use. It would provide a second driveway. Create two parking. It's unclear whether adding a second curb cut along Plymouth Street would present a hazard to pedestrian bicycle or vehicular safety. Relocation of the fire hydrant would be required. Um, unclear whether adding a second curb cut along Plymouth Street would present a hazard for pedestrian bicycle and vehicular safety. Uh, would not create a burden on municipal systems. The special regulation is the specific questions on the parking spaces. Um, staff note, there's a existing tree in the right side yard where the driveway is proposed. The applicant may need to receive approval of the tree plan, which we've mentioned. Uh, no other property on Plymouth has two curb cuts or two driveways, although lot coverage would decrease under the proposal, including a second driveway condition. Where much of the front yard of the property would be paved, which is discouraged for aesthetic reasons. Based on the drawings and dimensional details provided by the applicant, the staff is unable to evaluate whether the proposal for a second driveway conforms with the requirements of the zoning by law. It's unclear whether the proposed design would detrimentally impact the neighborhood character of the district or the adjoining districts. And the number seven, the proposal would not cause any detrimental excesses. Staff note, however, the applicants claim that two driveways equals less shuffling of cars, hence more pedestrian safety runs counter to the modern planning understanding of the impact of increasing the supply of off-street parking. Um. And then there's just an uh image of the from up above. Couple of pictures from the streets. You can see the driveway. You can see the number of trees here. Here is one of the adjacent street trees, and then this is the lowered area um that the the last speaker had mentioned um is the corner of their yard down below here. Um. Uh, so Department of Planning Community Development maintains proposal is consistent with the permit, special permit criteria that recommends the zoning board request revised drawings in their plans showing location, demands of proposed parking area and curb cut in compliance with the dimensional vegetation buffer requirements. And I know the current structure meets the minimum number of parking spots required by the zoning by law recommends the applicant consider reconfiguring the existing parking area to provide more convenient access instead. Um. So this is the, a letter prepared by the uh Department of Planning and Community Development, which they do for all special permit applications. Um, so one thing to note is that uh, for two family dwellings in the town of Arlington, there are, the minimum required number of parking spaces is two. Um, and so the applicant could very easily, the applicant is looking to provide twice what the minimum required parking is. Um, and has been mentioned by several people, including the, the recent memo that it would involve a significant amount of pavement at the front of the house. Um, yeah, greatly reducing the amount of the front yard impacting the side yards and impacting the um the vegetation on that right hand side. Um, I would like to ask the applicant, um, really what the, what the reason is for wanting to have a second driveway? Is it merely for the convenience of those living at the property? Um, or is there some other specific reason for needing to have um a second driveway?
So not only is it going to be convenient for that second driveway, but it realistically is for that open sta- backspace in the, in the backyard. Yes, the garage would have been coming down, but we would still be paving that whole entire backyard. So realistically, we do not have, we really only have about fifteen by twenty foot backyard space where we would, where with what we're proposing, we have about fifty by forty two.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Handler.
Just what I, and I wondered if you could simply ask the applicant whether the reduction in the pavement that he's talking about, the large amount of pavement in the back, is for the number of parking spaces that is currently proposed? Or whether, which I gather is more than the zoning by law requires, or is it to simply comply with the, with the, with the zoning? In other words, is, is this all due to the fact of, is, is, to what extent is that decrease in the amount of landscape space in the back due to overparking the house by, measured by the zoning by law requirement?
So as of right now, we still would have four spots um, in the, in the back of the house. We've in per se because of the way that they would have to clear the house in order to drive past um, for each unit side by side.
Mr. Handler, does that answer your question?
I think. I think, I mean, what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is that it doesn't change from the, what is proposed now, is that correct?
Yes. We would still have four spots prior to this proposal, or if we get these proposed plans.
And was, was the removal of the um garage a requirement for any building permits or no?
They were.
It was, okay.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Hi, so we, um. Yes, was that, Mr. La Blank?
Yeah.
Just one blank.
Uh, just uh, one question. I'm just looking through the special permit application, and there's differences in the existing and proposed uh areas. And I'm just curious why there's a difference if this special permit is just for uh driveway. Because also the site plan that's provided in the application doesn't show any differences in building footprint?
The footprint is, so the proposed drawings show the footprint as to what we extended through the building department um, without having to pursue a special permit and being within the bylaws as to what Arlington gives for the additional seven hundred and twenty five square foot, uh, square feet through the building department. So the proposed drawing does show the extension off the back that we did extend eight feet for the property. That's why the garage is removed.
There are other further questions from the board?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Handler.
That, the early one was attempt to just follow up and understand better what the answer was to your question, but I guess I'd just like to focus on the, the three conditions that, the three criteria that we have to find in order to allow this. And the way the zoning by law is stated is that if, in order to be able to grant the extra driveway, we have to make a positive finding that the development is going to meet each of these criteria. And I think that undue concentration of population is probably not a matter of great concern. But the other two, adequate provision of transportation and conservation of the value of land and buildings um, have been very much put in question by uh the hearing. And on the basis of the record before us, at the best I can say is that I'm highly uncertain, either that uh, it's possible with the best will in the world to preserve the uh trees that we have there, and I am not at this point able to make a positive finding that they are actually dead. Um, and I certainly, so there's the whole, that whole part, which all ultimately goes to the question of preserving the land, preserving the value of the lands nearby and so on, as well as other matters in the in the section three point three um, is something that I don't think we could make a finding on. There's just too much uncertainty. Uh, I'd like to have the tree warden have already seen something and weigh in on whether this is really possible to do. I'd like to hear more about moving the fire hydrant and whether the environmental aspects of that have added, were considered as opposed to just the water aspects. Um, all of those things are things that we need to know more about in order to make a positive finding. And with respect to the transportation, the staff has already indicated that they don't have enough information to advise us as to what kind of a positive finding to make. There have been some discussions about the uh, about children playing in the street, uh, the absence of this sort of thing in any of the other houses and so on, all of which to some extent go to the question as to whether or not there would be some sort of an impairment of transportation. So I feel less strongly about that because there's been less said about it and, and much of it has been speculative. But it's very difficult at this point, if we have a duty to make an affirmative finding that there won't be any interference with transportation. It's, it's very difficult to look at what's in this record and find and see what it is that such a finding could be based on. So that gives rise to a whole, there's a whole bunch of uncertainty that's expressed in there, as sort of a question, and I, and I doubt that it's possible for anybody to answer these questions off the cuff. We, we really need to have people weighing in from the town. We need to have real consult consultations with the tree warden. Uh, and maybe, I mean, all, all of us, I'm sure, most of us have gone out to look at this property, and I certainly agree with, with Mr. Dupont, that when you look at this space and you look at those trees and you look at the wall, it's very difficult to see how you could do what it is the applicant would like to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont?
So I think, um, you know, I'd agree with what Mr. Hammond has just said, and I think that the uh, neighbors have been pretty comprehensive and covering all of the concerns that anybody might have. I would just uh point out, and I'm not sure anyone has said this today, but uh, when I drove over there, it was, it was pretty obvious that that is sort of a congested and short street. I don't know what the actual width is, but directly across from where that proposed driveway is, and this puts maybe a fine point on it. There's actually a sign on a tree that says caution children. And I know from having my kids attend the high school for eight years, uh, you know, from one to the, the beginning of one to the end of the second, that that's kind of a major cut through from Highland Avenue for kids going to school. And I think we've had the same discussion with the property where they were looking at the bottom of Highland Avenue to put a driveway in um, based upon a variance request at that time, but I think that the concerns are the same. You've got a lot of kids walking together, talking, not necessarily paying attention. And to me, you know, this is not a place where somebody might expect to see a car coming from just based on the configuration that people have already noted, having one driveway per property. And I just concerned about the sightlines, the inattention, and just the congestion in general if people are parking that you just can't see very well. So that's one of my main concerns is kids going back and forth. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Other comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rick Adeli.
Uh, I, you know, just reading the, the memo from uh the planning department. Uh, they, uh, one concern they bring up is uh, you know, what the impact is to the neighborhood and to the character of the neighborhood. And, you know, I live in East Arlington uh with a similar configuration of houses with driveways on one side. And uh, sort of all the green space on the street is uh the front yards that are between the driveways. And though I don't think that one house would change the streetscape so much, uh, if, if one neighbor uh chose to do this, and then all the neighbors chose to do this, we'd have a lot of paved front yards um along a street, which I, I do think does have a big impact on the sort of character of the neighborhood and how the street feels. So I just wanted to sort of add my two cents on that.
Well, thank you. Okay. Anything further from the board? The best, I'm, oh, sorry, Mr. La Blank.
Sorry. Uh, I guess I just kind of wanted to go off a couple of points from Mr. Dupont on um, some of his observations. Uh, also going back to the, the applicant saying that the driveway is intended to slope uh downward to go along the, the sloping line of the adjacent property. Um, thinking about, you know, backing out of a, a slow driveway and sightlines when you're backing out of that um, is more difficult. Um, you know, I have a flat driveway and I still have trouble um pulling out. Um, so there, there's that. And also just kind of thinking about this a little bit further too with the sloping. Uh, just worried about the foundation of the actual building um, without really too much more knowledge or understanding of how much that grade change is uh based off of the information we're provided in the application. Uh, it's not sufficient enough for us to, to understand that, to make a, a finding.
Thank you. So, um, there are several comments that there, there are, you know, a lot of questions that we have um that on the application that, you know, sort of would prevent us from um, being able to make the required findings. Um, and it's not clear uh, that, you know, clarifying those questions, whether, you know, once those questions are clarified, whether or not we would be able to make the findings or not is also a question. Um. So I would. So I think the, the first question the board needs to decide is, do we feel that we want to um, request that the applicant come back before us with additional information, or does the board feel that it has sufficient information in order to, to render a decision?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont.
So uh, based upon the comments that Mr. Hanlon made about the information that we don't have necessarily with regard to the tree warden and such, I tend to think that it may be up to the applicant to decide whether or not he would like to come back um as much as it is whether we feel like we have enough information. I don't feel personally like I have enough information, but I do think it's the prerogative of the applicant to say that he would like to uh, obtain the information that's been referenced and come back or to just go forward.
So I would probably think that we were gonna withdraw our special permit application just because we really want our neighbors to be happy. Um, our intention is to make this look as aesthetically pleasing as possible, but with all of the setbacks that we've been receiving from our neighbors, I think we're gonna just withdraw our application altogether.
Um, would you like us to, to vote to accept that withdrawal this evening?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so then the, uh, the applicant has requested that, uh, they be allowed to withdraw their application. Um, and so the, this would, as we've done on the project cases, those would be, require a vote of the board, so um I move that the board um, accept the request to withdraw on behalf of the applicant for sixteen eighteen Plymouth Street. Um, is without prejudice?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Okay, uh, so then a vote, so this. Uh, then a roll call vote of the board, uh, Mr. Dupont?
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Rick Adeli?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. La Blank?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Uh, so the special permit application for sixteen eighteen Punch Street has been withdrawn without prejudice. Uh, our thanks to the applicant, our thanks to the neighbors uh for being present this evening. Thank you.
Thank you all so, so much.
This brings us back to our agenda tonight. He just said, uh, item number five, which is docket three seven three five one zero six Mount Vernon Street. Um. So I could ask the applicant to introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing and um, just a question for the applicant if they have information to share or if I should share the application, the um, the application.
Thank you. I'll introduce, um, we won't all speak. Um, I'll briefly introduce ourselves and then our architect, um, Jenna is on the line.
Oh, perfect.
Awesome. So she'll be sharing and um, speaking on our behalf. Um, I just want to briefly thank everyone for this opportunity. We're grateful to live in a community where we can have public face to face discussions, make decisions as a community. Um, it's what we find to be really special about Arlington and we're grateful. We've lived here for the past twelve years. Uh, we actually lived in a condo across the street from our current home where we quickly established relationships and inevitably several years ago, um, purchased privately from a neighbor here um, by way of some much beloved neighbors that are essentially our surrogate parents. Um, today we have a six year old son and an eight year old daughter at Brackett. I get to be a room parent. My husband coaches soccer. We spent last Saturday at town hall celebrating Arlington Eats. Um, during the day, we've built careers centered in social support, arts and education. Um, my husband worked at ACMI for several years, which is how we became acquainted with the community. We fell in love with Mount Vernon and this neighborhood because it embodies the idyllic neighborhood that my husband grew up in and the one I longed for as a child myself. Um, working together with our neighbors in community, we allow um, access to our driveway to cut trees. We drop off flowers when there's broken wrists. We help with snow shoveling. Um, we hosted a fundraiser for a neighbor up the street who kicked ass at the Pet PMC last summer. Um, we even hosted an apple cider party for neighbors with a small driveway because we love them and their boys truly like our own. Um, my mom is no stranger to the neighborhood as well. I have no siblings and for many years it was just my mom and me, and boy, did she work hard so I could grow up and be the adult that I am. Simply put, married or not, my mother, now seventy four years old and feeling her age is my person, and I'm lucky to be married to someone who feels the same responsibility to our aging parents that I do. I want to care for her and I know the benefits of intergenerational housing. I want to care for her and I know the benefits of intergenerational housing. So, and we support economic and social mobility and we love that we live in a town like Arlington that supports ADUs. My children thrive having my mother. And someone on this call can remember my mom slowly walking up and down Mount Vernon with a newborn, followed by a newborn and a toddler. To two children, often with neighborhood friends in tow. When my mother decided to sell her home during the pandemic. A neighbor a few streets over graciously opened up her home for her to live temporarily. And we have another neighbor on Mount Vernon that will be housing her while they're away this summer. This type of generosity rarely exists and we're so grateful. Our family unit allows us to be fulfilled and the pandemic along with housing shortages. And known scarcity have only propelled this decision. During this unique to us experience over the past day. We thought a lot about the values we want to embody as a family and bring to this experience as construction is not easy for anyone. And we've decided our actions and behaviors will continue to be rooted in what we believe in. Community, character, care, communication and an open door policy. Life is short and we're grateful. We can make things work. Um. We're grateful for everyone in our neighborhood, everyone, because they teach us how to be better every day. Our architect Jenna is on the line. Um, we are requesting an ADU. Um, our rear yard now is a full story below our existing first level. The new deck that we propose in our yard will create more usable space off the main level. Um, the location of the garage in the back left corner still leaves space around for a neighborhood buffer. Um, the driveway length currently fits three cars and we would have a new garage space. And we plan to use the space above and below the deck responsibly and in. The ethos of a good neighbor. So I am not an architect. Or an assessor, so I'm gonna leave it to Jenna to ask questions and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Um, Jenna, do you need access? Uh, to display?
Hello, thank you. Let's see. Yeah, I think it's.
Colleen, if you could make Jenna Ellison a co-host?
I don't see her on my list. I don't know.
Um, I have her on my list. She's. My participant list, she's the third name right after you and I.
You could share your screen if you wanted to just go through the plan.
You're all set now.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Um, my name is Jenna Ellison. Um, I work for Pegasus Design to Build. Um, I'm a licensed architect in the state of Massachusetts, um, and I work with a general contractor. So Pegasus sort of does it all. Um, so we will be, you know, we've been working with, um. The Snyder's now for about six months doing the design and getting everything ready to present to you guys. Um. So I will share my screen here and walk you through the design. Um, and if anyone has any questions, um, please let me know. Um, so a few three D images here of, um, their existing house and the proposed addition. Um, so as Bailey stated, um, there's a pretty, um, big grade chain from the front of the house to the back of the house. Um, and they have a walkout basement currently. Um, so our proposed addition, um, has a first floor garage with, um, a sort of. Hidden entry door, um, to go up to the ADU. And then, um, we're connecting the two structures by a shared deck. Um, and right now they. Have to go out the side door and down their driveway to use their backyard. So this will help them substantially. Be able to enjoy their outdoor space, um, as well as. Um, have their mom on the same level as them so that she doesn't have to walk up and downstairs. To see the kids and to, you know, participate in family activities. Um. So as you can see here, this is sort of their existing driveway. Um, I will show you the cert or the, um. Sort of, uh, site plan here, which I think, uh, depicts it pretty well. So their driveway ends at the edge of their house right now. Um, so to keep, um, the ability to have three cars in the driveway and still be able to walk to their backyard. Basically, we have, um. A, a distance here of a little over, um, five and a half feet. Um, so, um, friends can come down the driveway and still, you know, hang out in the backyard without having to. Have a weird way around the house or anything like that. Um, and then this has a little overhang here and. On their mom would be able to go up upstairs to her space. Um, so the two things that we are asking for, um, relief on are. Um, the side yard setback and the rear yard setback. Um, because we're attaching these two with the deck, essentially we have to use, um. The house setbacks versus having a detached garage where we could have, except, you know, use the accessory setbacks. And, um, you know, just from understanding how they live and, you know, how in the next twenty years. Martha's going to be, you know, needing to get back and forth. I, we think it's very important to have the connection of the structures and that's sort of where this sort of whole design came from, that there's a shared space for them. And their community to still be able to come to their yard as well as Martha having a little bit of her own privacy and her own space. Um, and keeping with, you know, the same context of a traditional style home, um, you know, with a gable roof. Um, and a, a pretty modest footprint here. So they have a, a nice sized garage on the first floor where they can store their outdoor things. Um, her stairway up. Um, so there would be four parking spaces. One would be in the garage. Um, so. Potentially, you know, a hidden car and then two in the driveway, um, would give some flexibility there. Um, and then. Martha's space, which is on, um, the first floor level, which she can access from the street. Um, and then walk through if say, you know, the stairs got too much for her or anything like that, um, is at the same level as, um, the main home. And she has, you know, a closet, a modest bathroom and an open living space, um, with her kitchenette and, um. Uh, washer dryer there. So she has a little bit of her own deck space. The family has their decks base there. Um. And a few other things to note, um, you know, if we go by like average height of the grade, um. You know, we could potentially, you know, um. It, it basically what I'm thinking is if, if anything, um. Needs to be discussed with the, um, neighbors, they're open to, you know, modifying any roof lines to, to help or, um. You know, modifying the deck if any dimensions feel like they could be tweaked. Um, we're very open to. Um, suggestions and, and everyone wants, you know, to live happily here and not cause any turmoil. So, um. You know, this is ideal for us, um, and, and we would really like it attached, but we could potentially go the detached route if, you know. That needs to, to, to happen. Um, so hopefully, you know, I've explained enough and I can. Show more photos or anything like that if, um, that will help with any questions.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Um. So just for. The general public, there's essentially, there are two applications that are being put forward, um. For this property, uh, one is a special permit, um. Or some of the, some of the, um. Uh, some, some of what they need, but they also are requesting a variance. And so a variance under Massachusetts law is a very specific request. Um, it, it, the criteria for it are set under state law, not under local bylaw. And they are essentially, it is a request for a specific exemption from the local zoning code. Um, due to specific, uh, criteria which are established under state law. So, um. The board will be discussing both of these, um, slightly, both of these aspects of it slightly differently. So, um, just for. The, for general circumstances, that's, that's sort of the way that that will, will happen. Um. So the first question I had had, um. So the. Currently. The house, um. The setback that's on. With the rear setback and with the left side setback, the house is currently compliant with both of those. Is that correct?
Um, say that again, the left side setback, yes, the existing home is.
Step back. Those are, yeah. Um, obviously, and then the right side is non-conforming at seven feet.
Correct. Yep. So this is, um, the survey here. So.
Okay.
Uh, that's correct. Yeah. So we would need a ten-foot side yard, um, for. You know, the, the house, um, and we're proposing a six foot here and we would need, um, a nineteen foot rear and we're proposing a little bit over nine.
Okay.
And then, um, here the uncovered deck, I believe can be. Five feet from the property line by right. Um, so I believe that.
Happens in this, yeah.
Yeah, is closer, but, um, should be, you know. Um, okay with the uncovered deck.
Okay. And then, does the property currently have the required usable open space?
So that is what, um, we're going for the variance for.
Yeah.
So, um, and also potentially could clarify this for me because I know in the bylaws it states to, um. That it would be twenty-five by twenty-five for the usable open space, twenty-five feet by twenty-five feet. Um, and right now we are proposing, um, nineteen feet by twenty-seven feet. Um, and we can probably get there by removing deck, like I said, um, so that's sort of. Open for determination. And then I know in the bylaw it also states for new construction that it could be twenty by twenty. So I wasn't sure if with this addition, if that's considered the new construction or. Because it's existing home, if it would be the twenty-five by twenty-five, so.
Yeah, so, so this would be an alteration, so it would still be, like, be twenty-five being the minimum dimension.
Um, okay.
So, yeah.
Yes, so that was the variance application.
Right. So there's, there's really three things you're seeking in the variance. One is the usable open space. Um, and then the other is related to the. The, the proposed ADU, the reduction in the side yard setback and the reduction in the rear yard setback.
Correct.
Those are all three, okay. Um, have you had any, so you're proposing to. Uh, increase the impervious nature of the site? Have you pursued anything in regards to, uh. To the stormwater retention or how that would be handled?
Yep. So, um, our foundation subcontractor, um, is proposing to put a dry well in. Um, so essentially we would, you know, retain any water that's, um, coming off the roof on site. And that would be designed, um, and submitted with the building permit with the structural design and everything. Um, basically to be sufficient with the town's guidelines.
Okay. Um. I think those are the questions I have at the moment. Um, other questions from the board?
Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Um, you may have to forgive me. I had to take a minute away from the screen and I probably missed it, the, the important question. Um, I was, I've been sort of trying to figure out whether. Or not. The, and, and if so, for what a variance is actually needed. It's my understanding that we just sort of breaking it down, if this were just a garage. It could be placed up to what, six feet away from the property line and with a special exception. Uh, more than that, as long as it was built with a certain amount. And under the zoning bylaw, if they had a garage. And then you added an ADU to it. Um, if it was an, if it was, uh, not attached. Uh, then you could still do the same thing by right. Not by asking our permission by right. It looks to me as if none of the, none of the borders here. Um, the setbacks, uh, reach all the way to six feet. So that would not be a problem either. Um, so the question then comes down to whether or not. The, the deck makes a difference. And the. Uh, I know that it is the practice in Arlington. To, uh. Treat a deck that can buy, that connects to buildings as if it makes them attached. Uh, notice that the zoning bylaw itself in the ADU provision doesn't talk about what is detached attacks. It talks about we, what is attached. And there is a definition for, uh, attached building in the, uh, in section two. Which says that to be attached, a building has to have a common wall with another building. A common wall with another building. Now detached is, you would think would be the opposite, but there the definition is. That it's detached if it has no physical connection with another building. But the ADU ordinance doesn't talk about detached. It only uses the concept attached. And that in turn is, has to do with a common wall and I don't see how the. Deck here creates a common law wall. So I'm not a hundred percent certain in my own mind that. Under the strict language of the zoning bylaw, that there actually is something that needs a variance. Or at least for these two things. Uh, and I want to pause here and ask Ms. Ellison if she agrees with that.
Um, so it's interesting that you say that because at one point we did have an attached, um, like common mudroom. Um, and then we, you know, sort of actually reduced things and, um, made the footprint a bit smaller. Um, so that's interesting that you bring up the, the shared wall, um. I, I'm, I'm, I think it's up for interpretation of how, how you say that. I think in my head when, you know, I'm attaching it with the deck, it. It acts as one, um, so that was sort of how I'm, I've been envisioning it, but, um. Yeah, there is no wall. So, uh, there's railing.
I will say that I, I, I've, I've talked to ISD about this. Their practice is to treat this as if it makes an attachment, but. You know, we're dealing with a new statute here, uh, one that was very strongly supported by town meeting and. It went a long way towards creating a sort of a new public purpose in the zoning bylaw that we have to consider. And so I just want to pay, put that as a question because as we go through the factors on the variance. I want to at least have in back of our minds that we may want to have preserved for ourselves the question whether. Or not, uh, the variance is needed. Now there's still one other thing and that's the usable open space. And I can't. My eyes are even, are, are seventy-seven years old and I can't. See this very well, but what I'm trying to figure out. The proposed deck itself is usable open space, correct? Uh, at least ISD informs me that it is and that the stair up to it shouldn't disrupt the discontinuity. The bit of, the portion there that is potentially usable open space is slanted on one side. And it's a little hard to see whether there's a twenty-five foot square there. And so I would like if, if. Ellison to say if, if. If the only question at this point is whether there's the minimum dimension of twenty-five feet. I haven't gotten to the question about whether, if there is. There's enough, um, but I can't see whether, whether the twenty-five foot square is there and I wonder if she could inform me about that.
Good question. Um, I have, um, this in a software that I can do the measurement. I was under the impression that. Um, the land, the usable open space had to be on the same level. And that the deck covering would not count as that, but if it is. The deck area, um, could count then, um, because really this was the, the smallest dimension here. Um, I believe. If I could use this deck area, that we could probably get it.
Okay. I, I did get a sense from, and we might want to confirm this because I didn't ask specifically about being on the same level or not.
Okay.
Uh, but in general, a, a deck does count as usable open space and that. That could affect that your need to get a variance on that part. Uh, on that part, uh, as well. I'm not quite sure. Uh, obviously if we're in a situation where you currently comply with the bylaw and you've introduced a new non-conformity. That's something that we have a hard time dealing with by special permit. But the facts here seem to me to be squishy enough in terms of how to analyze all of this. That I, I'd like us to, at least everybody who's paying attention to this to keep, to keep this, this in mind. By the, you know, it just, it, it, the amazing thing is, is that if it turns out that there's twenty-five foot square, we'll go from zero to six hundred and twenty-five feet. In a heartbeat because it's really a, a, an accident of. It's not, when, when you say there's zero open space, it doesn't mean there's no open space. It just means that there's a. There's a very technical requirement for us under the zoning bylaw that causes a discontinuity there.
Mm-hmm.
Chairman, those are the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. I think it is, it is a very interesting question about, you know, including deck areas. Um, in most cases where that has come before the board in the past. Um, in most cases where that has come before the board in the past, the deck is typically much closer to the ground level and doesn't have an open area that is a full height underneath it. Um, and the criteria for usable open space does require that majority of it be open to the sky. And so I'm kind of curious on the, how the, the zoning enforcement officer would interpret it, if it would include space under the deck or if it would include space over the deck in a situation like this. My understanding is that the, you know, spectral services has determined that um, you know, to the, to the question about whether these are attached or not, I think the spectral services has made their determination that it, it is considered attached, and therefore we're, um, we are tasked with with treating it as such, um. But it, it is a little odd that if you just remove the deck, then it become, you know, obviously then it's no longer attached, it's a very different uh, set of criteria. Are there other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Holly.
Um, this project reminds me of another ADU we had probably sometime last year. Um, the one question I had is um, there's windows on the left elevation and um, with, with the property line being so close, um, I'm not even looking at the views at this time. If it were a garage, that would be a different type of construction, but with the, within, you know, with the bedroom and the living space above, this still is a type five-way construction based on the, based on the chart that was provided, so there is a limitation on the window. Um, the amount of penetration there because of the proximity, um, is that something, um, Ms. Ellison have any information on that aspect?
Um, so I believe if it's closer than five feet, that we would need to do the um, special type of construction or the, what is it, type?
Type of, yeah.
Yeah, uh, so I think that we were, like, giving us, us being at the six feet would mean that we would not have to.
I thought it was ten feet, but again, I would, um, maybe you'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I believe it's closer than five, but I could be wrong, so.
For, for unlimited, but there is a percentage even for a ten feet, under ten feet. For an unlimited, you're right, that more than ten feet, but if you're um, uh, if you're under ten feet, there is still a twenty-five percent limit, so.
Okay.
Right, possibly.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Figure that out, no problem.
Right, as I, um, again, based on my recollection, they, they changed the uh, um, type of construction that would allow, I guess, you know, with zero lot line or closer to FSD, but this being still a five-way might trigger that.
Okay. Although we'll check that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
So, I, I would just start out by saying that I think that when we're looking at this new bylaw, the accessory dwelling unit, it doesn't necessarily mesh with other provisions that we have to take into account. And so I think it does make it difficult for us in terms of whether we are dealing with a variance uh, versus not. And I, I believe, you know, I think I'd start out, if I was looking at five point nine point two, in terms of the requirements, I think we can at least agree that it's not a large addition, right? Because it's not seven hundred and fifty
Right.
square feet or more. So that sort of brings me down then to the last bullet point on that particular page where it says requirements. And it starts out saying an accessory dwelling unit may be located, et cetera. But then it says, um, uh, if there is an accessory building, if I'm reading this correctly, uh, it, if, if provided that if such accessory building is located within six feet of a lot line, then such accessory dwelling shall be allowed only if we make a finding according to section three point three. And then it outlines those things that we need to determine, including whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, than the use of such accessory building as a private garage or other allowed use. So I realized that there's some discussion about, well, if it was just a garage, then the requirements for the side and the rear yard setback would be much different, but right now, we're sort of looking at this in terms of an accessory, um, a, an accessory or a building. And so for me, the character of it is a little bit different if it's an accessory building that is not within the six feet of the lot line. Um, the, the other consideration is that, as I read this new portion of the bylaw, if somebody does say put in a garage and then determines after that's constructed that they want to now convert it and to add some accessory dwelling unit space, we still are faced with this making the determination if it's within six feet of the lot line as to whether or not it's more detrimental, et cetera. So it, it feels a little bit circular to me. So I, I think that the um, email from, uh, you know, from community uh, development, you know, planning department. I think that, you know, they suggested that there was, should be a conversation with the building department as to whether or not as a right, they can do something there. And that, I guess, even if they said, yes, you can, you can build your garage next to the lot line, that still has to come back to us, I think, for the determination for the special permit. So I just think it gets a little bit jumbled, that's all I'm saying. And I think we end up having to make that determination regardless of whether there's a variance.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon?
Um, my understanding is that this isn't within six feet. So that the proviso that's here that it, it should be allowed only if, if, you know, it, the proviso is if such accessory building is located within six feet of a lot line. And I think it's not, but I may be mistaken. Zealison could clarify that, it looks to me like the closest it gets is six feet.
That's correct.
But my question, if I may, is then if if it's not within six feet, are we now having to talk about what the side yard setbacks have to be in order for it to conform? And I think that's a separate issue because then it gets into the question as to whether a variance is needed.
I think so, I, I, I guess the question, i- if, if you, presumably you couldn't just build a separate building that was six feet away, that had no other reason why it is that it could be, be that close. The, the thing that was, the thing that was true about the zone, about the ADU by law is that they wanted to be able to have people put ADUs by right into garages that already existed. That was what they had in their head. And so s- many times they are already within six feet, were already up to six feet. So the way in which the, they made a compromise on that was instead of making it by right all the way to the property line, um, they stopped at the six foot, said you can do it by right if you don't go within six feet. Otherwise, you have to get a special permit from us. And what we have to ask is whether or not the ADU makes it more intrusive than just a garage would be because you could already do the garage.
Right.
And so I think that if you don't go within six feet, then it's not a special permit situation anymore. The proviso that's in that fifth bullet uh, of uh, uh, nine, five point nine two um, is, is presumes that there's some other justification for getting closer than the regular setback to the uh, to the lot line, you couldn't, yeah, but, but that would be true here. And there's no particular reason why you have to do this in two stages and build the first garage and then add the, the ADU. So I think that, that, that they can actually go by right if it's, if this, if, if this is not treated as an attached uh, building. Uh, and if it is treated as an attached building, then they have to meet the normal requirements of the bylaw that they don't have a basis for going any closer than, than the ten feet that otherwise is required.
So to follow on that point then, is this being characterized in the description you just gave, Mr. Hanlon, as a garage? Which could be built in the location that is
It is, it is both, it is both. It is a garage with a, with a ADU on top of it. A rather small ADU actually, but it's only two-thirds the maximum size of an ADU. Uh, but it's a combined structure and it's just exactly, I mean, it's exactly that structure. This is sort of the opposite side of, if you remember the Venna Road case that I think Mr. Cole, Holy, it was exactly the other way around. They wanted to go close and wanted to, but also wanted to be attached and they eventually gave up on having the, a separate building and brought it back to where they wanted to be because they couldn't get closer that way.
So if I may, again, if that's the case, and this structure could be built as a garage slash ADU, we're still having to answer the question, are we not, about the usable open space?
Yes, yes, if there's, i- if in fact, it seems to me that if in fact you're dealing with a situation where we are now in compliance and there's a new non-conformity, because if there is some usable open space, there's not enough. Or if we decide that there's not any because you don't meet the minimum requirements, then you have introduced that and that would separately be a reason for a variance, I, is at least the way I look at it now.
Any further, Mr. Dupont?
No, I would agree with what Mr. Hanlon just said.
Okay. Mr. Riccadelli, I think you were speaking up earlier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was, I was going down the same path that Mr. Dupont was going down, so I, I don't think I need to add much, but I do think that it sort of comes down to if if the building department thinks that the deck has, says one building, then um, that, that may be sort of an issue uh, with that six-foot setback from the side yard.
Thank you. Are there further questions or comments from the board at this time?
Mr. Chair, so this is not a, an, a large addition because it's less than seven fifty, is? Wow, okay. And not including the garage, right?
Right, because the garage does not count towards gross floor area, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. I see nothing further from the board. In a moment, I will open up the hearing for public questions and comments, um. So again, public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing our decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the participant tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the meeting host, you'll be asked to give your name and address, and you'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. Anyone wishing to address the board a second time during any particular hearing, the chair will allow those wishing to speak for the first time to go first. And once all public questions and comments have been addressed, or we have reached, we are starting to get a little late, aren't we? Um, I try to go at least till nine forty-five, um. Uh, public comment period will be closed, or, and we'll do our best to uh, display what things are being requested. So with that, we go ahead, um, a few hands up, so first is uh, Mary O'Connor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Mary Win Stanley O'Connor and I represent Edwin Schmidt and Gil Google Kazian, who owned a property at seventy-nine Situate Street, immediately behind the applicant's property, and Scott in Virginia Tower, who owned the property at one ten Mount Vernon Street to the right of the property. Um, I, I will address the variance issue first. I, I respectfully suggest that a variance is required here. As the board knows, the building inspector is responsible for interpreting the bylaw. And I think the connected deck um, makes this a situation where a variance is required under five point three point thirteen B. Because the deck is an integral part. Um, so you have that issue as well. I also think that a variance is required because of, of the FAR and uh, the usable open space issue. Uh, they're creating new uh, additional non-conformities. Uh, I also note that the lot coverage issue was not addressed in the application, and that would likewise raise an issue. Oh, if a variance is required, um, I've submitted a letter on behalf of my clients that lays out the law. Um, frankly, I would suggest that the applicants would not qualify for a variance. The standards for a variance are quite, quite strict. There is nothing different about this particular lot than other lots in the neighborhood. It has to be something unique to this lot, soil, shape or topography. And um, I, I understand, I, I understand the issue of intergenerational living, but unfortunately, personal circumstances do not, as the board knows, constitute the type hardship that is required to give a variance. Uh, so I, I would say that it is not likely um, that the board uh, could find a variance here. With respect to the special permit request, um, some of the conditions that the board has to find on three point three point three is that relief is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. This is a non-conforming lot that is going to be virtually entirely covered by building. Um, and you must also find that what's being proposed will not impair the character or integrity of the district. And I would suggest to you that um, this is too much massing, too much on this small undersized lot. Though the neighbors are sympathetic to the situation of this applicant, this is out of a character for the neighborhood and um, my clients do have a, a presentation they'd like to show. Uh, and they are opposed to the grant of both a special permit and variance here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Next on the list uh, is Galen White.
I'm gonna put the video on. Hi there, good evening everyone. Um, my name is Galen White and this is Kareem Memes and um, we are the uh, direct neighbors next door. Um, if you're looking at uh, one oh six Mount Vernon, we're to the left at one oh two Mount Vernon. We have uh, been here for two years now, um, and, and could not be more excited about this neighborhood. Um, we have been welcomed with open arms um, by everyone and in particular um, by Bailey and Sean and their entire family. Um, we want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, and just want to um, give our support and say um, how amazed and um, just impressed uh, with um, all that Bailey and Sean do for the neighborhood and for um, the families here. And um, how welcoming and community oriented they are. Um, and how much of a huge part um, uh, Martha has played too in uh, their family and, and the life of their, their children and, and everyone here on the street. So we just want to give our support and um, and say that um, we are behind you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Megan Burns.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Megan Burns and this is Fred Hager. We live at one sixty-nine, one sixty-nine Mount Vernon Street and we have lived on the street for ten years. Um, we just want to comment that we are in support of uh, Bailey and Sean and Marty in their effort to have this proposed ADU. We think it's extraordinarily important to have some flexibility and understanding that intergenerational living. Is extremely important for both the families with the young children as well as for the. Um, elder members of our community who are supporting our children. And I just want to say that in a town like Arlington that is pro-family and is very supportive, we would like to see something like this. Um, in our neighborhood, supporting people who are great community members. And I will just add a personal note to say that I met Marty before I met Martha, excuse me, for the record. Um, before I met Sean and Bailey as she was caring for. Uh, Sean and Bailey's older child, who is the same age as our child. And, um, and you know, I would love it if I could have my parents. Um, live close by in a similar manner, because there's nothing more than having the support that you need. And being able to use your property in a manner that makes sense for you and your family. So thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, next on our list is Mr. Steve Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve Moore, Dupont Street. Uh, as always, my particular focus is trees and. From what I can tell, there are two very large trees at the back of this property on the fence line shared by. Uh, the neighbor, I believe, and the applicants. I don't know if any of this work, and from what I can tell, the answer is probably no. But I, I can't tell if any of the work is going to hinge on. Um, the root zone of those trees. So that'd be my first question to the applicants.
Ms. Ellison, do you? Can you address that question?
I'm not positive on what, um, so basically there is one large tree that's, um, in the fence line. Um, so essentially we would be nine and a half feet away from that. So ideally, we were not planning on touching any of the trees and keeping it as is. And typically they'll protect the side so that no one, you know, runs anything into them. Um, but I would need to consult with, um, an arborist to determine if the nine feet is enough. To protect the, the root system.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
We were not planning on, um, harming any trees or taking anything down.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, that, that's, uh, that's good news and the, uh, the addition of a tree protection plan. Or not plan, but just methods, uh, would be important because that looks like a substantial tree and. If, if it's, you know, it's basically a foot away from the tree for every inch of BBH and. Looks like a pretty big tree, so, uh, but, but it strikes me that a lot of this work isn't necessarily going to serve that. I don't know, just, uh, something, something to keep in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, next on the list. Um, is Scott Tower.
Um, my name is Scott Tower. Um, my name is Scott Dower and I am the, my wife and I, Ginger, and I are right side of Butters. To, um, the property at one ten Mount Vernon Street. We've been here since nineteen eighty-five, that's thirty-eight years. Um, we also love the street and the neighborhood and. We have taken care of our property for, for all these thirty-eight years. And we would like to state our opposition to the, um, application petition. Um, for the one oh six ADU. Um, I believe that that addition negatively impacts us, our quality of life and our property values. The lot sizes in our neighborhood are already, um, less than non-conforming. Um, less than five thousand square feet and if we were to be able to count the. Garage as, as space. Um, it's almost like putting a house, almost two houses in a property that already. Can't handle one house. I mean, it's already not, zoning doesn't account for. So, um, we are worried also about, you know, a lot of things, but the, it sets a precedence. Where, you know, these lots are small and. Um, it, um, we worry about, well, on the left side of Butters, it's going to block sunlight because it's a two, two-story addition. Um, in addition. The HVAC system was not, was not indicated in any of the drawings. If it's outside of the house, I don't know if it is. Not a huge point, but an HVAC system can indeed be very noisy and disruptive. Um, and I, I guess our biggest concern really is, um, is the deck. The deck is very big. It's on a property that grids down, so the deck is. It's ten feet, six feet above, above grade. And as such, it can loom over the property in the rear. And, and the noise and the lights and the activity that can occur there. Will, will resonate to, to our side. And it is also, you know, less than six feet from our property and I know it's a deck and that sort of supposedly doesn't apply, which I learned today. But it is awfully close to, to our property in raised and as such, um. You know, there's no way, there's no way that we can essentially sort of. Yeah, have any privacy from the, the, if there's any activity or anybody on the deck. We can't, there's nothing we can do as a Butters to, to block their, their, um. You know, block them or have privacy in our own property. So, um, those are sort of the key things. Um, other things are, um. The indication that there is no effect on traffic. Um, it feels like, you know, that's a small driveway already. We all have narrow driveways, we understand that, but, um, they're too detached. For all intents and purposes, detached officially, your terminology, I don't know, but, um, but. Those properties are not. Uh, are, from my understanding, detached and as such, managing cars. In two detached properties is not a simple thing, which means that. You know, there's going to have to be negotiation between these two detached properties to manage moving cars. Which would, to us, probably mean that there'll be more on-street parking. Mount Vernon Street is not a wide street. There is a fire hydrant in front of their house. That means they're going to park in front of neighboring properties. And the street is narrow enough so that if there's side-by-side parking. Larger vehicles will not be able to pass. So I do believe, um, that there is a, um, a traffic issue. That can be imposed by this, by this property. Um, those are sort of like the main things. Um, hang on, let me make sure. Yeah, um. Alright, so this is a permanent structure and what happens, you know, over time when it's not an in-law apartment. Does that mean that it becomes a rental property? I don't know how all that works, but, um, then, then. And, and it becomes also more difficult to manage cars. And then what happens to the deck with, you know, uh, if it's a rental property, are they buddies? Are they not buddies? It's, it's really, it's, it's, it's a permanent structure which in, in the, in the garage. Which isn't counted. It, it, it just, it's just a really big structure in a small lot with a big deck. And, and if they're considering that the area under the deck is, is open space. I don't know how that's all going to work, but blocked by the deck. And, and there's a garage, there's a back door from the basement. To their backyard and that's a three-quarter, three-quarter door, which implies to me that. That if there were a deck there, a normal-hated human being couldn't stand. Stand at least at the, at the foundation end of that deck. So I, that whole, that whole deck thing, um, is bothersome to us and as such. We oppose, we oppose this addition. Oh yeah, yeah, and, and you know, big, big wood neighbors and all that. It's, it's the permanent nature of the very large structure that we find, um. A little, is find offensive and concerning and the debt as well. And I guess, I guess that's, that's it for us. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, Mr. Tower. Um, this, uh, next is Edwin Schmidt.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak and, um. We wonder if we could, um, share, uh, some slides with you.
Ralston, can we do that for them? Perfect, thank you.
Um, let me, let me get started and then we can share some slides. Um, my name is Gail Gulcazian. And I'm here with my husband Edwin Schmidt, who goes by Ned, but on the official documents, he's Edwin. Um, we bought our house at seventy-nine Situate Street in nineteen ninety and have lived here for the last thirty-three years. Uh, which is half our lives because we are also senior citizens. Um, we raised our children here and hope to remain here for as long as we're able to in our retirement. Um, our property butts the rear of the applicant's property so that our backyards face each other.
Excuse me a moment. Can you, can you all see the slides?
Cannot. At the bottom of your Zoom, Zoom screening, there should be a green button that says share screen.
Yeah.
Select that and then of the images that pop up, select the one you want.
How about now?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay, alright, hold on.
There we go.
Alright, we've accomplished, we've accomplished task one. So, uh, we are the rear of Butters to the applicant's property and we submitted a written opposition. Which includes a lot of detail and goes over what we believe are specific defects in the application materials. Those are mostly related to the legal points already highlighted by attorney, so. We are not gonna, you'll be happy to hear, I'm not going to repeat those here, but they're, it's in our document. But I mean, our general view is that the applications would overcrowd this small land and leave zero usable open space. And really be devastating to a Butters' use and enjoyment of their own properties, at least, at least for us. And set a, a precedent for further overcrowding this, this neighborhood. The, the applicants are not seeking, I mean, we've talked about this a bit already, they're not seeking exemptions from just. One rule or, or one setback, but substantial relief sort of all over the place. And, um, so we've highlighted what we believe are, are all the, the issues. Um, I, I admit that my understanding was that because all these, uh, buildings and decks would be attached. That the setbacks applied to all of them and I know that that's up for debate, but. Um, basically it's as close as, you know, five feet, eight inches, the deck is to the, the side property line. And for us, the, the, uh, building, the, the new proposed building would be fourteen feet. Um, rather than nineteen feet, which is the setback area, um, from the, from the rear property line. I'm sorry, it would be nine point nine feet, so, um, about half of the, the required setback. So we're not talking about a small amount, we're talking about a substantial change. And I, I want to note that we, we are not really comfortable being here to oppose something our neighbors want for themselves. And we certainly take nothing away from all the good things that Bailey and Sean and, and Marty, I don't, I hope I can call him Marty. Um, that, uh, do for the neighborhood and how well-liked they are by the neighbors and all that. And this is absolutely nothing personal and not to detract from any of that. This is about the, you know, our property and our ability to enjoy the property and, and the neighborhood that, that we've lived in for the past. Thirty-three years. So I, I just want to be perfectly clear that, that we're, we're basically, we feel we're advocating for ourselves. Our property and, and the neighborhood.
And property values.
And property values as well, that's right. Um, and, and I also, I think it's been noted, and I'm going to note again, that many people in the neighborhood, including us, have added to their house. To, to gain additional living space, but have done so without violating the zoning rules. And, and without intruding on the interests of the, the people that live around them. I mean, we are very, very close to each other. Um, and this shows how, how this slide that we show now shows how much of the lot will be consumed with driveway. Um, house, the proposed garage ADU and, and the proposed deck. And I, I just need to react to something that was stated by one of the board members earlier is having to look at, you know, whether the. Um, the ADU is tremendously more intrusive than a garage by virtue of being on the second floor. And it, I just have to state in the, in the strongest of terms that it is. Um, you know, a, a one-story garage would not raise the issues that are of such tremendous concern to us. In terms of being able to use our backyard. Um, anyone who's, I, I don't know if any, um, board members have had an opportunity to, uh, visit our neighborhood, but. That, anyway, if they have, they realize that the neighborhood, uh, is con, is comprised of a number of very small lots. And we're all sort of on top of each other. We can practically pass the salt shaker across, uh, to the, the people that live next to us. And, um, but it's the space between the buildings that give us a sense of openness. And a little bit of privacy. Um, the lots are all non-conforming, less than the minimum of six thousand. Most surrounding, uh, one oh six Mount Vernon are less than five thousand square foot, including. Uh, including one oh six and including seventy-nine Situate Street where we live. Our backyards are small, but they are incredibly precious. We enjoy them a great deal. Um, it's really the only yard space that we have. We don't have yard space on the side. We don't have usable yard space in the front. So the backyard is it. It's where we spend all of our outdoor time. Um, in all seasons, except for the one that we're just getting out of. And, and we feel that enforcement of the zoning rules is particularly critical when a neighborhood is this tight. There, they are, uh, the houses are very close together, but they're lined up with open space in between them, as I think I mentioned before. So we can see past the houses behind and in front of us to the other side of the next street. And this is a consistent pattern on Mount Vernon Street and on Situate Street. And, uh, unfortunately, this proposal would pay, place a huge tall barrier across our backyard. And, and destroy any sense of privacy that we have in the back of our house. And block a lot of light and air and our current views of the sky and trees. It would block the space between the houses where we can now see across to the other side of Mount Vernon. And I, I have a couple of pictures to show you what I'm talking about. So this is currently our backyard. We still had a little bit of snow on the ground at the time. And, uh, as you can see, both on the left and the right of, uh, of one oh six Mount Vernon, which is the blue house. Um, we can see, um, across to the other side of the street. And this is what it would look like with the, uh, new proposed building. It would completely block. Um, our ability to, uh, have a view, uh, that, that sense that we are part of a larger. Um, you know, area and that we can see that space, um, across the street. Um, on Mount Vernon Street and we would be, you know, sort of blocked in by that huge structure, which would be, you know. Very close to, to our fence and, and our fence is as tall as it's supposed to be in Arlington, six feet. But you can see that the. But you can see that the, the height of that building would just completely overtake um, our backyard. And this is from the second story of our house, looking at the backyard. And there it is with the, the garage ADU. So um, it really will have a substantial impact on, you know, the, the outdoors space that we, that we currently enjoy um, as it looks now. Um, this shows you how the property would look. It, it actually is from um, one oh six Mount Vernon and um, how much of the lot will be filled up um, with buildings and deck um, if this proposal goes forward. Um, and it, it, I mean, it just, while this would be a perfectly fine plan um, on a bigger lot, uh, this is just uh, represents a huge mass on a very small lot. And um, we will be the um, unfortunate uh, rear abutters who will be facing this, this big block. We also wanted to mention that the flooding issue that um, has been previously mentioned, and I don't really, I don't really understand how that's been addressed in the plans and whether it would be effective, but um, we are downhill from um, their property. Uh, their property slopes down from front to back. And um, we do already get flooding. I mean, just uh, a week or two ago, when we had those heavy rains, we had flooding in our basement and in our backyard. And um, it seems that that is likely to increase if uh, additional structures or non-porous land surfaces are added. And uh, by my calculation, or actually my husband's calculation, he's the numbers guy. Um, the proposal calls for an additional hundred square feet of driveway plus the garage ADU with the five hundred and twenty square foot footprint. So um, we're concerned that that additional amount of non-porous area could, could really um, worsen our, our problems with flooding.
Uh, in addition, um, the driveway is lengthened uh, only by about five feet, but it also goes past the back of the existing house. There's another hundred feet of uh, hundred square feet of driveway there as well.
Is, is there a lot more to your presentation?
No, I think we're, we're pretty much um, we're pretty much at the end. So um, I can uh, turn uh, turn it over to whoever's next.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you for hearing us. Appreciate it.
Certainly. Um, next on the list is identified as Cornell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, please. Name an address for the record.
Okay, my name is Andrew Cornell. I'm on a hundred Situate Street, which is up the road across Spring Ave from um, where Gail and Ned live. And I just want to express to the board that I'm very, very concerned about this project, if it goes through increasing um, basically taking over open space, which is, people have mentioned is really at a premium in this neighborhood or in all of Arlington. It's just not correct and it's not right. And it's not why people moved um, into this neighborhood. And I'm especially concerned with housing prices going up. People are going to be improving their houses, um, adding on to it. And I think this just sets a very, very dangerous precedent for all the reasons that um, those opposed to this have already brought up.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, next on the list is uh, Zoe Cronin.
Yes, thank you. Um, my name is Zoe Cronin and I live at one twenty-one Mount Vernon Street, which is diagonal across the street from Bailey and Sean Snyder and hopefully soon to be Marty. So first I just wanted to say that the Sniders were super welcoming to us when we moved in six years ago. Um, they couldn't be better neighbors and more beloved and more considerate towards everybody on the block and welcoming inclusive. I feel really lucky to live on this block. And I think um, it's something where, it's a block where family comes first. And that's really what's striking to me about what the Snyder's proposal is, which is for them to be able to take care of their mom. And when we talk about neighborhood character, to me, that's what Mount Vernon Street is all about. And I applaud the Sniders for what they're doing for their mom. And I think it's, it's really a beautiful and nice thing. And as far as the way it looks, to me, it perfectly matches my vision of the character of the neighborhood and reflects our values. Um, I just wanted to add that Marty is here three days a week anyway. Um, so all of the discussion about whether extra people are moving in or actually people are gonna be parking, she's already here because she helped to raise um, the Snyder's two children the whole time that they were babies and in preschool. So I just wanted strongly support their application.
Thank you so much.
A neighbor's come over. For connection.
Uh, next on our list uh, is Liz Bombs.
Bomsey, thank you. Um, my name is-
Well, bigger person.
No, that's totally fine. Uh, my name is Liz Bomsey. This is my wife Kate Heard. We live at sixty-seven Newport Street. So um, just sort of two streets over on the same block, basically, as, as many of you. Um, we want to echo the uh, strong support of all the other folks who spoke already for the Snyder's project. Um, uh, we are now Arlington residents largely because Bailey and Sean um, introduced us to the wonderful community here. Um, we've been here about five years now. Um, and uh, we have been the beneficiary of the community's support of the Snyder's who rallied hard for us when our younger child was diagnosed with a critical illness a couple of years ago. Marty especially was here multiple days a week, bringing us food, um, picking up our kids at school. When we need backup, she's like a second grandmother in our house. Um.
We're both only children and we feel Bailey, we really, really want to support you in this because this is intergenerational living and what we sacrifice in space and living in Arlington, we make up in leaps and bounds in community and support and everything that goes along with, with family. So we really strongly support this project.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you both. Uh, next on the list is Julie Gibson.
Hello, uh, my name's I live at twelve Puritan Road, so I'm sort of a neighbor a few streets over. Um, but I've been following Bailey's uh, journey here and, you know, just a few notes while I'm listening tonight is that uh, I definitely understand that this is a dense town and I understand everybody's concerns. Um, but my understanding of, of, you know, I've also followed the ADU as, as my eighty-year-old dad has had many struggles of his own. And I've sort of followed Bailey. Um, but my understanding of the ADU is that the new statute strongly was supported by town meetings specifically for the purpose of affordable housing. And I think what no one has mentioned, although it is specific to Bailey, is that her mom was a public servant. She worked uh, with special needs folks for many, many years. I don't know, thirty plus years. Uh, she's exactly, in my opinion, what ADUs were made for. Um, so as I listen to this meeting, to me, it sounds a lot about semantics, right? So if they can build a garage and then build an ADU by right, the question is really about deck access between the two houses and whether or not that becomes the quote attached or detached. Um, I mean, I think we're talking specifically in this case, but I understand that it's bigger picture about whether, you know, it's unfortunate that the neighbors didn't just approach directly because they probably would have had a conversation about this, but uh, I think specifically we're talking about the semantics of whether or not the deck constitutes open space or because of its height, uh, because of the topography of, of the lot, whether or not the height uh, qualifies as open space or not open space. And I don't know that any of us have uh, an answer for that tonight. Um, but you know, to me, this is exactly what ADUs are meant for. They're meant for uh, intergenerational living. They're meant for folks who need affordable housing. They're meant for folks who are assisting, you know, people in the community to go on to be able to give back to the community. And I think that's exactly what the Snyder's do. I mean, you know, Bailey works at the Boys and Girls Club with the inner-city kids. I mean, this is, this is like the exact situation that I could imagine ADU being um, specifically designed for. And I think, you know, I just want to echo that the same about Marty. Their mom has already been there for um, eight, nine years with their kids, many days a week. I don't think she parks in front of the fire hydrant. I think she's already parking in the driveway. They already park their cars in the driveway. So I, I, I don't imagine that this would be any sort of um, hindrance on traffic or any of that.
Right. Thank you very much. Um, uh, next on the list is uh, Paul Tannenbaum.
I'm muted. Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you. Hope that you're freezing up a little bit.
Hey, hi, I'm Paul Tannenbaum. I live at uh, one oh-
Your connection is-
Can you hear me now?
Not muted. Yeah, it's just that the connection is freezing up a little bit. Do we want to try turning off the video?
Okay. One and I'm over on the street uh, directly across. Hold on. How's that?
I'm trying again.
So, can you hear me now?
Yeah. I can hear you now, yes.
Okay. Um, I've lived here since nineteen seventy-seven, so I may be one of the uh, longest uh, residents of Arlington on this, on this call. Uh, look, I'm, I'm in support of uh, what Bailey and their families trying to do. And uh, the prior uh, presenter actually covered a lot of my uh, points. Uh, I've been here through a lot of construction and there's other uh, of us on this uh, call right now who have done construction. I mean, my, my addition done many years ago, you know, was an addition of a bathroom and two bedrooms and a family room and a, in a full basement, finished basement. And others, uh, you know, Jimmy Fahy's on the line. He's put on additions and there's been changes in the neighborhood. And the lots have gotten smaller. Every one of us, as mentioned earlier, has a small lot. And any change, you know, makes some impact on what you get to see and don't see. Uh, you know, so in, but my yard is now smaller and my neighbors uh, you know, have compost bins, two of them behind me. And so, you know, when, when changes happen, you make changes. So we put up shrubs to provide the greenery to go forward. And, and others, you know, there's gonna be change and you can make it's better for yourself, even when your neighbors make changes. And there's been discussion about noise, whether you have a, a deck and you have a party or you have people in your backyard and you have a party, you're gonna end up with the same kind of noise factors. Uh, when I, when I listen to the technical issues back and forth among the board members, it appears that there is a, there's a at this.
Oh, this president, we're losing you again.
Go just the way it's been. Tonight, I just did it in my head, just looking at the size of the, of the deck. Uh, it was easily uh, over twenty-five feet if you just look at the dimensions. And then, so the question is if the deck is open space, then it looked like the quick math that the twenty-five foot square was gonna be achieved. And um, and then the question is whether the deck, connected deck, a deck connected to the house is a connection under the wall. So I think the board has a few things to do that seem to be uh, very straightforward. It's either gonna be, it's okay the way it's designed or it's not okay. And then the Snyder's will have to look at what, what adjustments need to be made. But I think the, the neighbors, all of us, uh, you, you accept change. It's, it's just what goes on. And I think it's a good idea for Bailey's family. And I think it's a good idea for the community. Thanks.
And I'm gonna say one more thing. This is Marcy, Paul's wife. I've been on watching everything. One thing I'll say about this deck, because of the design of Marty, uh, of Sean and Bailey's house, the backyard, because of the slope, the basement's above ground. So for this family to have connection with each other, you have to have, you almost have to have that deck. So Marty, go in their front door, out the back, on the deck to her building without having to use any stairs. That is critical. We are now in our seventies and we're very aware of the aging process. And I think it would be a big mistake to not have that deck. I think it's a very practical, brilliant idea for people who are aging, who, who just need extra help. That's all I'm gonna say right now. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Um, uh, Lindsay Whitaker.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm Lindsay Whitaker. This is my husband Andy. We live at one thirty-seven Mount Vernon Street and owned this house for nearly twelve years. Um, I want to point out that I'm actually a huge proponent of ADUs and intergenerational living. Uh, my mom grew up in intergenerational house. It's super important and she speaks fondly of it.
As did I.
As did Andy. Um, his, his grandmother lived in the house with him. Um, and a year ago, my parents, who are not local, my dad nearly died. Um, he had sepsis. Uh, so I was driving back and forth to New York very frequently. Bailey and her family, um, including Marty bent over backwards to help us, which shows what an asset they are to the community. I also want to be clear that according to my interpretation of current ADU laws in Arlington, um, it, the ADU cannot be rented out full stop. So I wanna, I know that kind of came up earlier as a question, so I want to make sure that that's very clear. This is not a building that can be rented out, sold separately or any of that. Um, and lastly, you know, as, as um, uh, you know, the, the speaker before me pointed out, you know, part of living in community, part of a community is accepting change. And I understand that communities and neighborhoods change, right? Communities, they need to adapt to the needs of its people. And moving forward, that's including intergenerational living. That's including being part of the sandwich generation. So I just want to say that we at one thirty-seven support Bailey and Sean and their variance proposal. Thank you.
And I would just add to that, and this echoes what Julie had said. Um, that this, the change for change's sake isn't, it isn't automatically good. But the town meeting has already expressed the kind of change that it would like to see, um, which is why these ADU uh, guidelines exist. Um, and why, you know, the uh, it would, it would be a very fitting example um, for when any kind of variance along these lines should be approved.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, next is uh, Dan Pocchini. Diane Pocchini. Last tribe is Pocchini?
Yes. Okay, here we go. Yes, my name is Diane Pocchini. I live at seventy-five Situate Street, which is uh, behind the um, house we're talking about, kind of the cross kitty corner. And um, I have a- And, um, I have a nice backyard, have lived here almost sixty years. And I am very worried about the new, uh, construction. Um, we already have water coming from that, uh, property in heavy rainstorms because it's up higher than, uh, my land and the house next door has had water problems. Um, it also, uh, the privacy issue, this anomalous, uh, addition and deck looks right over into my yard and I just not very comfortable with that at all. I understand all the wonderful things people have said about the, uh, people wanting to do this for their mother. Um, but I have to consider, um, the neighborhood and the neighbors and the people around. I'm elderly also. Uh, there's a lot of violations on the building and a lot, a lot of codes that I saw were not, uh, in, in form. And also another thing, I don't know if anybody's mentioned, uh, the fire hazard, uh, being so close to all of these houses, that's something else I'm concerned about. Um, and I just am not, uh, I, I'm not, uh, for this addition on that house at all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, next is Trish Boudreaux.
Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, Trish Boudreaux, I am located at ninety four Mount Vernon Street. Um, just a couple of doors down from, from, um, Sean and Bailey. And I wanted to express my support for this project. Um, as many on the phone have already spoke about. I actually met Marty, uh, before I met Sean and Bailey. Um, I was walking with my daughter at the time and Marty was with, um, Sean and Bailey's daughter, who's the same age as mine, and she introduced herself. And since then, um, you know, we've come to know Sean, Bailey and Marty very well over the last, um, eight years. Um, and I have been at Mount Vernon for, um, just over ten years with my husband. And we'll, we'll tell you that Sean and Bailey and Marty have only enhanced the neighborhood, um, since I have moved in. I understand the neighborhood, um, to be, has always been an incredible neighborhood and community, um, where there is a tremendous amount of, um, families and, um, diversity, um, in, within the neighborhood. And the neighborhood, my understanding, has changed. And over the last, um, you know, prior to ten years ago. And I feel like they have only, um, added to, um, the, the culture and the, in bringing the community back together again and making it where, where neighbors do help one another. Sean and Bailey will literally, um, help, help their neighbors in any way that they can, whether that be setting up, uh, uh, swing set in the backyard to, um, to snowing blow, uh, blowing snow. Um, Marty has been there alongside, um, so much as she's picked my daughter up from school along with, um, Sean and Bailey's daughter. So, you know, I think inter, intergenerational, um, is so important in this community. I think it adds to the community, um, and wanna again, support, wanna say that I completely support this project, um, for Sean and Bailey and Marty and, um, and just want to thank you once again for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the last speaker on our list is, um, has spoken before, um, since be for a second time. So I would just ask that, um, give a brief, uh, again, Scott Tower.
Okay, yeah, um, again, this is Scott Tower. Um, there were a couple of issues that I thought, um, I would like to bring out. There was an issue about, um, needing, not needing stairs to go between the two houses. But, but because of the grade of the yard, um, there's stairs, stairs are unavoidable for one, for one thing. Um, there was also somewhere in, in some of the proposal documentation about the water usage, um, implying that there was only going to be a bathroom, but there's a bathroom and a kitchen. So, um, and washer dryer, I assume. So that's all, um, all not accounted for. Um, and in addition, um, you know, it's just, it's that the deck is going to be so raised that it's difficult. Um, there, there's no way we can, we can essentially isolate ourselves from, from the neighbors. Um, okay, so we are the, we are the most impacted. The rear and, and the, the right and left side of Butters. And, um, I believe that, um, that this deck will be intrusive on our property. And, and as the structure will be, well, it is not fitting with the neighbors. Now, we like, you know, we like Sean and Bailey and all the neighbors seem to, but that's different from, um, from, from a permanent structure that we all have to, um, live with and sets a bad precedent for the rest of the neighborhood. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tower. Um, I had said that Mr. Tower was going to be the, the last, um, person to, to speak tonight. So I know, uh, another hand has gone up subsequently. Um, but I do need to, I had intended to end public discussion about twenty three minutes ago. So, um, I do appreciate everyone's, uh, passion on this and, uh, all those, uh, speaking on both sides. Um, so coming back to the board, um, there definitely are several, several issues we need to, um, deserve, get to the heart of. And I think part of that too is determining, you know, where we have the information we need, where we would be looking, uh, for additional information. Um, so the big, I think the, the big question in front of us is the, is the variance question. Um, because the, the rules for variance are very strict in terms of what we are allowed to, um, to accept, uh, as a part of a variance application. And um, there's, I know that Mr., uh, Mr. Hanlon has expressed, um, let's say you do, uh, a different interpretation on the usable open space. Um, and I just go back to, to him. Um, if you had, uh, that, had you had a conversation with inspectional services specifically about that question?
Um, it's really, it's just an email exchange and the issue that has been raised about what the, what Mike has told me is that decks usually count, decks count as usable open space. And that the stairs would not interrupt the continuity so that they wouldn't, they wouldn't prevent you from having a, yeah, twenty five foot, um, uh, twenty five foot square. Um, the question that arose tonight is, well, but does that make a difference? Maybe a deck that's more than a certain level high is treated, would be treated differently. I've not had a discussion with him on that, other than that, the existence of the stairs. And therefore some element of height, uh, was implicit in the question that I asked.
Yeah, that, um, I would ask similar question of Ms. Ellis, and if she'd had a conversation with inspectional services about the interpretation of unusable open space.
Um, I was under the impression that the deck would not count, um, after showing them the survey and, um, our, um, site plan.
Okay, so you had the conversation with inspectional services and they indicated you would, you would need a variance.
So it wasn't inspectional services, but it was, um, uh, I think it was Rick Valorelli, um, okay, with me about needing the variance as well as the special permit. Um, so I had applied for the special permit for the setbacks, um, not realizing that it also triggers the variance for the usable open space, the twenty five by twenty five. Um, but I guess it's a little frustrating that also in the zoning, it says that the twenty by twenty for new pro, you know, a new project would be passable, a new house construction. So, um, yeah, you know, there's obviously a bunch of different information that, um, I was a little unclear of.
Okay. Um, had you investigated looking at what would be required to do the, to try to keep the addition within the boundaries of the setbacks?
Um, so typically, I mean, we could, but the garage below would essentially be unusable because of how the driveway works. Um, they wouldn't be able to maneuver a car into it, um, which then sort of defeats the purpose of us having Marty on the same level. So you essentially have a ground level, um, ADU that, you know, could be within their yard. Um, which is, you know, definitely a possibility. I think at this point, um, the homeowner and I, you know, are considering, if this isn't attached, which is essentially just the deck, we could build this by right. But really that isn't desirable to them. So, um, I think at the end of the day, it's really going to be a question of, you know, the, the attached or not attached really does affect their lifestyle and then really does affect, you know, um, the usability of it. And, um, you know, if they're, if, if that's worth it to them.
The curious, if you had the garage and you turned it sideways and put it against the back of the house, you could come down the driveway, do a hard right into the garage at the lower level. And then with the ADU above would be at the main level of the house. Um, but you would be away from the side yard and the rear yard setbacks.
Um, yeah, I think that, um, could definitely be a possibility. I think the drawbacks would be, you know, again, their access to the yard and the light, you know, for them to access it, because then essentially they'd have to go through their, their, the mom's unit to get to what would be the back, um, yard there. Um, but yeah, I, I think that there definitely are possibilities for us to tweak things. And, um, I think that we're definitely open to making adjustments that will, um, you know, make the board happy as well as, um, the neighbors.
Okay, yeah, because my, my, my sense is that the board has some questions that we would need to get resolved, uh, from the, the zoning enforcement officer specifically about the attached versus detached question and the usable open space question so that we have a very definitive determination, uh, from him.
Um,
Mr. Chair.
You, Mr. Holly.
I want clarification or question here. I could be possibly wrong here. Um, I'm looking at the district regulations table. And for our O, R zero, R one and R two districts, for an accessory building greater than eighty square feet and private garages, the height maximum is twenty feet. Right now it's twenty four point one feet is what I see on the side elevation. So that could change a few things, what, what you suggest, or not what you suggested. I meant, um, with the whole deck and, you know, and the height.
Twenty feet be from average grade?
Um,
because there's a big, yeah, uh, slope there.
I think it's twenty one point four is, as I see it right now on your drawings. Is that too from the average grade?
Yes. Yeah, but I, again, if that were, we would be very okay with modifying it to get, um, the twenty feet. So that would be the, um, accessory.
Yeah.
Um, right. It, so that would, that would be, if it was considered not attached, we'd also have to meet the twenty foot. Um, so a small adjusted, adjustment to that height would be, um, by our end.
Right, if it is not considered attached, that is correct.
Yes, yeah, and we would be open to that.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Are there questions from the board, either for the applicant or questions that we think we would want to have with the, um, with inspectional services?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont.
So I realize how complex this can seem in trying to knit these various provisions together to come up with a reasonable solution. I mean, normally what we're looking for is the applicant to say, this is what we are proposing. And then let us sort of apply the rules that we have, uh, with regard to the proposal. And I realize that this may be a little bit different. I, I do think that, you know, based upon what Ms. O'Connor had said, um, I, if I'm not misquoting her and if she's here, she can correct me. But it seemed to me like there was, uh, an indication on her part that the fact of the connection from the deck to the building would in fact mean that it would have to conform to the zoning setbacks. And, um, Mr. Chairman, if I see that she's just checked in, could I clarify that with her? Was that the position that, uh, you enunciated?
Yes, because that's the position of the code enforcement officer, Mr. Champa, that, that they're, um, uh, interrelated and connected. Their integral part under, I think it was five point thirteen, three B. So that was one of the issues.
Okay. So that clearly is something that I would like to get clarification on. The other thing, um, is that I know we were talking about the deck and whether or not that's usable open space. And I was just looking at the definition and I don't know whether or not the deck is considered the roof. Uh, because I know it says that it's roof that's less than or equal to ten feet above the level of the lowest story used for dwelling purposes. So if that's what we are trying to determine, I think that that again, you know, needs to be figured out as well with the building department, uh, what they consider to be open space. Uh, because I don't think that we, we're stumbling around a little bit when it comes to that question. And I think we do need to have some clarification. And then we have to see, because I know I've, I've looked at Ms. O'Connor's, uh, letter and, you know, she intimated that the property, the usable open space was being reduced from two thousand one hundred and fifty square feet to zero. Yeah. And whatever the numbers actually are, I do think that we need to get clarification from, uh, the building department.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Just want to be a little clearer on the, to me, the issue about attached or unattached and so forth. And are all, I, I think of basically the getting a variance as a cliff that the applicant will just fall over if that's what is required because it seems to be exceedingly difficult, given the strict state rules that we have on giving variances. Um, or for being able to, being able to really grapple with this. So it's important to do these things. And just, I just want to be clear that the section that Ms. Connor cited, um, what it says is an accessory building attached to the principal building shall be considered as an integral part thereof and shall be subject front side and your rear yard requirements applicable to the principal building per section five point four point two. The question I originally raised is whether in fact it is attached to the principal building, given the definition of an attached building in the zoning bylaw. And that's a question of law, that's not a question of judgment. Uh, it's what the zoning bylaw says. And, uh, I, we need to kind of work that out. But it's a very important thing because it relates, because without that, you have to do something about the deck. The deck is what's creating the attachment. And I think that if you get into, you need a zoning variance territory, it's quicksand. And it's, it's, you, there's no exit from it. So these kinds of things seem very technical. I think one of the speakers indicated that and it is very technical. But very big things that matter to lots of people sometimes turn on what seem like very, very small things that because of the law, they, they make the difference between being able to do things and, and not. But I don't consider, uh, the section that, that Ms. Connor's, uh, cited as answering the question. It really is what poses the question. It's, it's, it's what happens if you decide that, if you decide that it, that it, uh, it is attached, it tells you what the consequence is. And the question is whether there's an article, argument that we should be accepting but to apply what I think is the plain language of the zoning bylaw, even though that has not been what, the way in which it has generally been interpreted according to Mr. Mr. Champa, that their, their regular practice is to treat the deck as, 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 uh, as connecting buildings. And that's something that, that just happens. And this case poses that very clearly because of the, and there, and we need to, I think, look carefully at whether, at, at what the. At, at what the language of the zoning bylaw says and what it means for us here. And it's always difficult to do that. Especially in the light of a brand new program that has changed the purposes of the zoning bylaw. To, among other things, include things like encouraging intergener- intergeneration, you, intergen- intergeneration uses. And other kinds of uses as well. The AD user have a separate set of purposes that are no less a part of the purpose of the zoning bylaw. As the provisions in section one. But in any event, we need to, we need to go there and I think that there, there has to be a conversation both. With inspectional services to see what they think and how they, how they address these issues. And separately, Ms. Ellison has to be working with, with her clients and others to see what they can do. To, uh, to somehow manage to get things done, given the interpretations that, uh, are. Going to be given this. So there's lots of work for everybody to do here and this is not. Is not as, as crystalline as many of the cases that we have before us.
No, I think that's very well taken. I think it. That would very strongly encourage the applicant to, um. To speak with inspection services and to figure out what they can do short of needing a variance. Um, is the, as, as has been stated several times, the first question. In whether or not a variance can be granted, it is, is there something unique about the shape, so- soil and topography of the. Site which is unique to that and is not general to the district. And I think that's a very, very difficult case to make on this site where essentially every single lot is the same shape, the same size. And on the same side of the hill. Um, and so I, I think that the, the best course for the applicant. Um. Is to speak with inspection services and really sort of find out what, what they could do. Short of needing a variance and at the same, the board can do the same. Um, with the special services to sort of figure out exactly what their interpretation is on these questions so that the board is better. Um, it's better prepared and then I would recommend to the applicant that, um. That we continue this hearing. Um, until our next scheduled hearing, which if I'm not mistaken, April, Tuesday, April eleventh. Calendar. Yeah, it would be Tuesday, yeah. Uh, would the applicant be amenable to that?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions that the board wants to raise at this time so that we're sure that we have responses? Ahead of the eleventh.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamlin.
Um, I don't have them all in front of me, but there are several other things that have been raised. Uh, things like the floor area ratio and, and other things which are tricky because in the table. Uh, like for example, on maximum floor area in our one zone for a single family detached dwelling. There is no requirement that relates to, to the floor area, but other permitted structures.
Mm-hmm.
Do have a thirty point three five. We have in, in the Allen Street case, treated the other, uh, permitted structures as really essentially part of the whole thing and the whole. We've treated a garage in that case as being part of the single family detached dwelling. And that involves somewhat different issues, but. It's not an easy thing to do to figure out whether the point three five would apply in this case or not. And this, and the ADU by law itself, uh, suggests that the, the ADU is treated as. That is to say, if you have an ADU, it's still a single family dwelling. Um, so we think the various other things that have been raised, lot coverage and so forth. We ought to at least work our way through and see. What inspection services think and also consider how they relate to the decisions we've already taken in, in related issues.
All right then, um. Then the board would need a motion to continue, um. This hearing. Um, until Tuesday, April eleventh. So moved. Thank Mr. Hamlin. I have a second. Just make sure the applicant is in agreement with that, so we would be continuing to Tuesday, April eleventh at seven thirty.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Sorry, ask a quick question. Will there be a s- a summary given to us? On what the topics will be that we'll cover for the next meeting, so I can sort of check off, um, what I need clarity on.
Um. I can send you the list of things that I was going to go over with inspection services.
Okay.
But I, I would encourage you to, to look at. You know, and to, to sort of figure out what you could do short of needing a variance.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, then a vote of the board. Uh, Mr. Dupont.
Hi.
Mr. Hamlin.
Bye.
Mr. Holly.
Hi.
Mr. Cadelli.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Little Blank.
Hi.
And the chair votes, I, we are continued on one oh six, uh, Mount Vernon Street. So thank you all very much for your participation and everything this evening.
Thank you.
Uh, this brings us to the next item on our agenda. I greatly appreciate the patience of the applicants for one twenty one Park Avenue, um. I could have the applicants introduce themselves and tell us what they would like to do.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and the board. Uh, my name is Bala. Um, and my wife, uh, Lena was the one who made the application. Uh, I also have along with me Paul Miller, who's our architect. Uh, and he'll be walking us through the plan, uh, as far as the addition goes. Uh, we've lived in, uh, Park Ave for the last four years, um. And we moved from, uh, India, Singapore and then here. Uh, we really enjoy our life in, uh, in Arlington and we love the neighborhood. Um, what, when we bought the house, we didn't realize how much we missed the space we have in the ground floor. So the addition that we intend to do is to add additional space where we. Uh, plan to have a, uh, a kitchen and casual living space. We have a large lot at the back, it's about twelve thousand square feet and the addition is for about thousand square feet. Uh, and the variance request is, is primarily because it's, it's about the seven fifty square feet, um, as per. As per the guideline. So that's what we are requesting the variance for. Um, and I'm highly, highly appreciate everyone.
Sorry to cut you off, Paul. It's a special permit.
So that's, that's the request, uh, and we appreciate everyone staying back this late, uh, to go through it. So for that, I hand it over to Paul to go through the details.
Mr. Miller, would you like to share your screen?
Yes, please.
Sir Rawlsen, if you could go ahead and elevate him, thank you very much.
We're all set. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, uh, thanks to the chair and to the board for, uh, allowing us to present our project. Um, I thought I would just quickly start with a. Broad overview to show where the house is that we're proposing that the addition to. This is one twenty one Park Avenue here in the, the center of my screen. Um, we're between the water tower uphill and, and Massachusetts Avenue, uh, downhill. And we're proposing, as Bala explained, an addition off the rear of the house. Which will require a special permit under the, the large additions, um, section of the, the bylaw. And I'm going to switch over to some drawings. Okay. Uh, can everyone see my screen still? Thank you. Uh, so a couple of, uh, contextual photos, uh, that show the existing house. It's a two and a half story colonial house, uh, with a, a fairly generous backyard. As Bala already stated, it's a twelve thousand square foot lot. And we're proposing to add a roughly one thousand foot addition off the, the back of the house, um. Existing first floor plan. And I'm going to skip right over to the proposed first floor plan. This is the area here that comes off to kind of to the page left. Where we'll be adding the addition. And I'll show that in elevation as well. Uh, the front of the house is the right elevation here. There's no proposed change to the front elevation. Uh, the rear elevation is on the left side of the page and you can see the smaller volume in the foreground of this image is the. I- i- is the addition. And a side elevation looking from the south. You can see the existing house at the right and the addition coming off of it to the left. There's a portion of the addition with a flat roof and there's a portion of the addition that has a, a pitched roof. And this is the elevation, uh, from the north. Um, and those are all the drawings that we, um, intended to show. I'm happy to answer any questions that, uh, that the board or members of the public have about the project.
All right, thank you very much. Um, so the addition is just a single story addition, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um. And then the right side setback, um, I think you have it listed as eleven point seven, but there's some portions that stick out. That are bringing it down to ten foot three and I just wanted to confirm that that was correct.
That's correct. Yes, there's a small, I'm, I've just pulled up the plot plan. Uh, thanks for pointing that out. Uh, there's a small bump out on the right side of the drawing here. That's the north side of the addition. That, that comes out an additional roughly a foot and a half and comes within ten, uh, ten point three feet of the property line. That's as close as it comes to the property line.
Okay, and if, if I remember correctly, there are no significant trees in this area, is that correct?
That's correct. There's one small tree that, that, uh, is close to the existing house that we will be taking down. The, uh, the property does have a number of beautiful large trees and those are all being maintained.
And then, um. I, I noticed when I was looking at the, the property, how? Are you looking to stage the construction and access the rear?
So there, uh, it's a good question. There's a, uh, a double gate at the front of the house here roughly where. Um, if you can see my mouse, the eleven point eight foot, uh, dimension is shown on the plot plan. That's a double swinging gate that can open up. To roughly ten feet wide. There, there's a contractor who's already been involved with the pre-construction phasing, um. Of the, and pricing of the project and they will be bringing all their equipment through that double gate through the side yard.
Okay. And they're not concerned about the, the great change and the. Sort of the, the support of the soil with the, that low wall that's there now?
They're not.
Okay.
And just to be clear, uh, uh, which low wall are you referring to?
I thought there was a low wall just off the, basically along the property line, but maybe it's just a slope.
There, I'm not aware of a low wall there. Bala, is there a low wall on?
No, there's, there's no low wall.
There's, there's, there's a low wall running along this side of the property for, for a portion of it, uh, maybe kind of. Like that, um, but we're not doing any work on that side of the property.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that the adjacent house on the north side is set significantly lower.
It is. It's a, it's a change in topography only.
Okay.
And all of the, there's a, um. Fairly substantial, uh, kind of shrubs on that side of the property and those are all to remain.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just had one question, um, um, from Mr. Miller. Uh, so the, um, when we were looking at elevation, the flat portion of roof, that, uh, that's a terrace, correct?
Correct, yes, that will be a terrace with a walkout from an existing bedroom.
Okay, so will that have, you know, guardrails and other stuff that we won't be seeing on the elevations right now, maybe that developed yet?
That's a good question, um. I believe we. There's a low parapet wall here. That's only a couple of feet high and our intention is to put a very minimal. Uh. It, it's not designed yet, but some kind of minimal metal rail that brings it up to the required thirty six inches above the deck surface. It will be something similar to what I'm sketching here.
Got it. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
So Blank.
Uh, I was wondering what any, um, system sustainability features are going to be part of the addition, um. Considering where the town of Arlington is going in terms of, um, sustainable building practices. Especially having the specialized code on the, um, the town meeting, uh, coming up. Uh, so just kind of curious of where this project might be going in, in that direction.
Good question. Thanks for that. Um, something that's important to me as an architect, the work that I do, I feel that. One of the ways that I can make a difference is by, as a baseline, making sure that all of my, the buildings that I design are as. Energy efficient and sustainable as possible. So for instance, in this building, we've proposed, uh, continuous exterior insulation. And high quality air sealing techniques that we take it upon ourselves to help the contractor through in the construction process. Um, the insulation spec for this house is two inches of continuous, um. Uh, mineral wool board on the walls as well as three inches of continuous, uh, foam on the roof. So we, we are going above and beyond the required insulating coat, current code insulating values, uh, at the walls. We've also, there's, there, there's no current plans to install solar panels on the house, but. Part of the reason that we have a pitched roof here is for the future. For the potential of, uh, a future solar array. Uh, it's pointed due south, um, and it's a, it's a great pitch, uh, for mounting solar panels on. So that's not something that the client is committing to day one, but it's something they're very interested in, uh, in the future as their, their budget allows.
And I guess just a follow up on that, what about, um, HVAC systems?
Thanks, uh, good question. Yeah, uh, this will use a, a mini split.
Okay.
To heat and cool the addition. So all, all electric, uh, we haven't gone into specifying appliances yet, but I always encourage my clients to consider. All electric appliances in the kitchen as well, um, because of the known environmental benefits.
That's all.
So great, thank you, um. Espers, real, can you go back to the Google Street View?
Yes. Um, I think I'm, can you see it now or do I need to stop and reshare?
Oh, shoot, um.
I could, I could do that. It's, uh, it's, it's making me, yeah, I just have to choose one window at a time. Okay, how about now?
It started. There it is. So on the right hand side.
Yes.
There's definitely a low wall in this photo.
Yep.
From twenty, December twenty twenty two.
I see it, yes.
So I just want to make sure that. Construction loading on that section of ground is not going to. Undermine the stability of that wall, which is likely non-engineered.
So what I can tell you is that the. W- we had to file a stormwater, uh, permit application.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as part of this. As part of this project and we needed to have test pits dug in the backyard. And so the contractors already. Brought a small excavator back there to do that digging and there was, there were no issues. As far as I know, and I'm not, I'm not a contractor, I'm not building the project, but as far as I know, there's no plan to bring any. Machinery heavier than than that. Back to do the work.
So they're not going to try to bring a cement truck to the rear yard? They're just going to pipe it from the front?
Yes. There's, I don't, the, the, there's, I don't think there's any way a cement truck could fit back there.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, if, if that, if that kind of staging became a problem, then we might choose to use. Cement blocks instead of a port and place wall.
Other questions from the board? Get ready to open the public for public comment. Public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing the decision. Members of the public be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Those who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the participant tab in the Zoom application. Those calling by phone, please dial star nine. To be called upon by the host to ask to give your name and address, given time for your questions and comments. All questions to be addressed through the chair, please remember to speak clearly. And once all public questions or comments have been addressed or we've hit 11, oh dear goodness. Then the public comment period will be closed. So with that. They have very familiar hand, Mr. Steve Moore.
That's overly familiar at this point, I'm sure, Mr. Chair, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I also noted that wall and noticed various street map pictures that showed it and then showed it disappearing in other pictures. I didn't quite understand that either. So that is a good catch. That wall, I believe, does exist. And as a practical matter. Is this addition going to be poured on a slab or is it planning to have some sort of small basement?
The plan is to have a basement underneath the kitchen area. And a crawl space beneath the. Remainder of the addition, which will serve as a dining room, living room space.
Okay, Mr. Chair, then it sounds like concrete or cement truck is required. Or like you said, maybe you would offer concrete blocks instead, but I just. As a practical matter, I just don't understand how much in the way of heavy equipment is going to access the back of the lot. I saw there was a very large tree, but it sounds like the applicant is staying away from that side of the property. So that seems to not be an issue, which is wonderful to see because that's a very large tree. But I just, I don't know. They're pretty close to that neighbor's big bush. That's all I think. Thanks, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any members of public wish to, any other members of public question to address this evening? None, I will go ahead and close public comment. Do believe we are in receipt of a memorandum. From the Department of Planning, Community Development. Like it was one I just sent last night. Why can't I find it? Here we go. So this is the memo from Planning Department. Basic address of the special permit criteria. The proposal includes rendition with roof terrace successful, is our structure minor changes to facade. Owns the vicinity included range of styles, design compliments, the style of the existing structure adjacent homes neighborhood, which include contemporary style home on the abutting property. Visual details include facade articulation, wood cladding, metal roof. Overall proposal would not dramatically impact the character of the neighborhood. In the opinion of the Special Services. And they had requested that the zoning board appeals request in north elevation clarifying exterior materials for the bump out. So that is their request. I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing again and ask Mr. Miller if he could bring up his drawings again. And just go to the north elevation. So just to clarify, so you have the vertical siding. And then the, the, that blank portion towards the end of the bump out, what exactly is that?
We hadn't made a determination about what that would be, but it probably will have the same siding. There, it will, it will have the same siding as the rest of the addition. The. The siding. Will, it may not end up being vertical because of budget constraints on the project. Is that something that the, that this board weighs in on? The orientation of the siding?
Not usually. But we could certainly include a condition that. You know, that the orientation of the, if the board is so inclined that the orientation of the siding is. It can be either way. I think if we, if you're looking to substantially change it to some, you know, substantially different material, that might be a question, but it's. Some more material, but just a different orientation. I don't think that would be an issue.
No, if it were up to me, it would be exactly what we've shown here, but there are. Other constraints at play. Specifically, the budget that may require making it horizontal siding, but I'm happy to commit now to. Cladding the bump out in the same siding as the rest of the addition.
Okay. Other comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, question siding, would, would this be painted to match the existing, Mr. Miller?
So again, I, I originally was hoping that it would be natural wood. Yep, that was the intention from the beginning. That, you know, I felt that that material would fit. Well, in the neighborhood, given that there's a sort of transition from colonial style homes to modern style homes. And it would be. A nice compliment to the existing horizontal white clapboard to have a kind of natural weathered wood look, but. I think that, again, it may not be in the budget unfortunately, and so in that case, it will be, end up being a. A painted. Clapboard. But. We're committed to making this an aesthetically pleasing addition, both myself and the client. And we take into consideration what it looks like relative to their house and as well relative to. The neighboring properties as well, because we see it all as a, a composition together, so. I think that at this point, it's, we can't commit to a paint color or a finish. Just because we're, it's still relatively early, we're still sorting out the budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
When we eventually, when, if we approve this. The first condition will be that it has to be constructed in accordance with the plans. And I guess I've never really understood that that would mean that. Details of this kind that are shown on the plans would be. Binding and somebody would, if they, would if they had did some sort of engineering on it, had to. Get an amendment. I've never seen us come by and do the amendment, but I just wanted to be clear that. I mean, I guess I'm not entirely clear now that with this subject has come up, just what is binding in these plans and what is not? I, I thought that this was, was not, but, but I. Beg to be corrected if that's wrong, that would make a difference in how we, how hard we look at all the details of the plans.
Yeah, so in my experience, I mean, we've, there have been minor changes in color have come, you know. Usually we don't know the color, so it's tough to sort of know. The only times we've had people come back is if they. We had one house where they added a small shed dormer on the. Front of their garage that wasn't on the plan set. It's more things like that. But when it sort of comes more to. Coloration and things like that, I think we have. Yeah, the, obviously the plans don't indicate a color right now. It just indicates that it's, you know, vertical tongue and groove wood siding, so. You know, if it's not vertical tongue and groove wood siding, that becomes a bit of a question, but we could just indicate that. You know, that it remained wood siding or. You know, if we just, you know, indicate that the applicant has indicated that they may be changing the siding and. You know, the board expresses no interest. We could certainly do something like that as well.
I just. I'd hate to get into a situation where in every case we have to explicitly. Say what the applicant is free to do, because then every once in a while we'll, we'll forget something and then they'll be back before saying you didn't exclude it. So now we have to come back again. It has, as far as I know, it has not generally been, been a problem, so.
No.
There's nothing to be fixed, really. I hope.
No, and I, I think there's, I think that. In special services, I feel it does a good job interpreting our decisions. I'm not overly concerned about there. As well. So this is a request for a large addition, so. In addition to the standard seven questions, the company has special permit. The board does need to find that the alteration or addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. It needs to find that the dimensions and setbacks considered in relation to our. Dimensions and setbacks are considered in relation to abutting structures and uses and that it's conforming. With the purposes of the bylaw. And so. In certainly in review of the plan, review of the. The, the, the drawings that included and the discussions and the constructability. And in regards to the discussion in regards to. Some of the sustainability questions. I have no. I personally have no issue with finding the. In favor of the, the criteria for the large addition. The only condition I would want to add. Would be typically with an addition like this, if, you know, the, in the future, the applicant could add a second floor by right. I think a, a part of this application is that it, because it's a single story, it's a different. Type of project than it would be if it was multi-story, and so for that reason, I would just. Want to include a condition that a second floor could not be added. Without the approval of the zoning board.
Sounds fair to us.
Are there any other conditions that members of the board would like to see? Should the board vote to approve this application? The board has three standard conditions, one of which Mr. Hanlon's already alluded to. The first is the plans and specifications approved by the board for the special permit shall be the final plan and specification submitted to the. Building inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. Should be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. Number two, the building inspector is hereby notified, he's to monitor the site. And should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures that any time he determines that violations are present. The building inspector shall proceed under section 3.1 of the zoning by law and under the provisions of chapter 40, section 21D of the Massachusetts general laws and institute non-criminal complaints. If necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section 3.1. And number three, the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to the special permit grant. And now the additional condition. The second floor may not be added without the approval of the zoning board of appeals. Are there any further questions or concerns of the board? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I move that the application be approved, subject to the three standard conditions plus the additional condition that regarding future changes that the. Chair has read into the record.
Second.
Mr. Handler, thank you, Mr. DuPont. Any questions from the board on what we are voting for? Seeing none, yes, sorry. Nope, then a roll call vote to the board, Mr. DuPont.
I.
Mr. Hanlon.
I.
Mr. Holly.
I.
Mr. Good Alley.
I.
And the chair votes I, the motion is approved. So there's approval for the special permit for 121 Park Avenue with the three plus one conditions. So the board will write up a decision and will approve the final language at its next scheduled hearing, which is Tuesday, April 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. Really appreciate the, the time and the help here.
Absolutely, and appreciate your patience. It's never fun going on last, but thank you very much for sticking it out.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Everyone.
You're welcome. Alright, so members of the board, hang on. It's always so fast to jump off the call. We need to, we need to have a quorum to actually adjourn, so that's, that's the critical part. So. As they said upfront, the 31st is still the last day we can hold a public meeting online. It has been sitting on the desk of the. Of the governor since last week, so hopefully she will sign it in the next day or so and we'll be able to keep going online. But the next scheduled hearing is, is the Tuesday, April 11th. So there are three new cases for that. We have just added two continuances to that evening, so there are five things now on for the 11th. And then Monday, April 17th is the next meeting for 10, 21, 10, 25 Mass Ave. If there are any outstanding questions, we do want to try to resolve them at that meeting, so. Spend some time going through the materials and we would want to try to wrap that one up because. On Tuesday, April 25th, the plan is to start the comprehensive permit hearing cycle for 10 Sunnyside Avenue. And I have asked Mr. Hanlon if he would. Sort of take the reins on coordinating that hearing cycle, so he will be taking, taking that on.
Mr. Chairman, could you repeat that date for 10 Sunnyside?
Exactly us for the next, next Tuesday, the 25th of April.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Anything further, hi members of the board, thank you for sticking around. Thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout. Thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting, and I'd especially like to thank oh, got ahead of myself. Colleen Ralston and Marissa Lau for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of our proceedings. It is my understanding that the recording made by ACMI will be available on on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town dot Arlington dot ma dot us. That email address is also listed on the zoning to adjourn. Mr. Handler, would I make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I couldn't. I got, I missed that last sentence. So moved.
Vote of the board to adjourn, Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon.
Aye.
Mr. Holly.
Aye.
Mr. Goodell.
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. LeBlanc.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Not at all.
Good night, everybody.
Night. Everybody.
Good night.